Testing. All right. Good evening, everyone. Time is 5:33 PM is Tuesday, July 18th, and I'm going to call this special city council meeting to order with the city secretary. Please call the roll.
Mitchell?
Here.
Tobias?
Present.
Heiser?
Here.
Flores Cale?
Here.
Zuniga?
Present.
Bradshaw? Parsley?
Here.
All right, six members present. We have a quorum. Next up is citizen comments period. Mr. Cook or whoever wants to come forward. There.
Mayor, distinguished council members, thank you for letting us come in here and talk to you, and thank you for all your support that you've given us throughout the years. At this time, we're going to ask for your support again. This time, we're going to do a dog telethon. Now, that sounds kind of funny, but we're going to make it work. This telethon is to help disabled veterans with service dogs. These service dogs are very expensive. They cost upwards. Their training and everything costs upwards of anywhere from $50,000 to $70,000. Our portion of this, and what this company has asked us to do, is raise $3,500 per dog for the logistics of the owner flying out to meet the dog, staying with the dog, learning about him, training, everything else, and acclimating himself and the dog to each other. Comrade Cook and I went up to the state convention and saw a graduation where there were half a dozen or more dogs in a smaller room than this, and not one bark, not one whimper, not anything. And folks, if you could see the face on these veterans that desperately need these dogs when they are handed the leash, it was moving. And so, post 12058 here in Kyle is trying to spearhead this thing. The state commander's interested in how we're going to be doing this, and we may just be launching something here that goes statewide. That's our hope. It will be the 18th of August from 8 o'clock to 4 o'clock, and what we're asking is that one of you would write a proclamation in support of this, and that all of you would come down periodically through the day and talk, and just let us know what you think of this and offer your support. Is there any questions?
Well, we can't take questions during citizen comments, but thank you.
All right, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward? All right, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close citizen comments. It's now closed. Next up is executive session. I don't know who's last.
Go ahead and read. In pursuit to Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, the city council reserves the right to convene into executive sessions from time to time as deemed necessary during this meeting. The city council may convene into executive session pursuant to any lawful exception containing to Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, including any of the following topics: pending litigation, settlement agreements, seek advice of city attorneys concerning the legal issues pursuant to Section 55107, Government Code, Section 105, Texas disciplinary rules, enforcement and professional conduct, enforcement of the oil and gas pipeline ordinance and amendments, settlement litigation arising from the Kinder Morgan Pipeline, and number two, possible purchase exchange lease of the free state pursuant to Section 551072 to deliberate purchase of real property for the public purpose, purchase of property for the city facilities and public purposes. Number three, personal matters, city manager performance review discussion, and to convey into executive session in 551087 Texas Government Code to deliberate regarding the offered economic incentives to one or more prospects that the city seeks to have locate Project Chiopet, Project Lion King, Project Hot Pursuit, and Project Lakeview. We are in executive session.
Thank you for reading that.
All right, good evening. Sorry for coming out a little bit late. There was no action taken during executive session. There will be no action taken now. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, we are adjourned. All right, good evening, everyone. The time is 7:09 PM. It is Tuesday, July 18th, and I'm going to call this regularly scheduled meeting to order. Would all please rise to the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the city secretary please call the roll?
Mitchell?
Here.
Tobias?
Present.
Heiser?
Here.
Flores Cale?
Here.
Zuniga?
Present.
Bradshaw?
Here.
Parsley?
Here.
All right, all members are present. We have a quorum. Next up, approval of the minutes.
Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve the minutes for city council special meeting on July 6th and regular council meeting for the same day, including the special meeting minutes for July 8th, 2023.
Second.
All right, motion by Mayor Protem, seconded by Councilmember Parsley, that we approve the minutes in the agenda. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye? Aye. All opposed. Our motion carries seven to zero. All right, next up is citizen comments period. At this time, we ask anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak to please do so. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes and that you direct those comments to the mayor and council. We also ask that you fill out a citizen comments form and submit that to either myself or the city secretary. I have three who have signed up in advance to speak. First up, Lila Knight.
Good evening. My name is Lila Knight, and I'm here to speak to you for just a few moments about the proposed misting system for downtown Park. I'm certain I don't have to tell any of you how hot it's been in July, and I'm sure August and September will be just as bad. The only information given in this proposal was that the larger system will use 16 gallons of water per minute. That would be 960 gallons of water per hour, and you're proposing a schedule, which I guess could change, of 43 hours per week, which brings it up to 41,280 gallons per week, or 165,120 gallons per month. In addition, there are maintenance costs, the purchase of the system, and then there's electricity costs for powering the pump. I'm pretty certain you've heard that many residents around town are not very happy at the limited watering schedule they're getting for their own lawns. So it's rather drastic for the city to be out there just throwing gallons of water into the air. I understand it being cooler, but right now, no one should be out here in the heat, period. Also, we're in stage two drought, and under the city's drought contingency plan, the city's goal is to reduce water use by 20%. And I don't think this misting system comes even close to doing that. And I also checked in with the Barton Springs Edwards Ogrifer Conservation District yesterday. That district has been into critical stage three drought since October 20th, 2022, and I'm certain that all of you are very well aware, we are still relying on water from the Barton Springs. They also informed me that they, they are predicting they will be in stage four drought within a matter of weeks. And just so you understand how crazy that is, the district, which has been in existence for decades, has never witnessed a stage four drought. So I would just ask that you please table this for when water comes back, or when we get that new Arvo water. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, next up, Ms. Evangeline Chapa.
Council members, mayor, staff, Evangeline Chapa, I just want to thank Yvonne Cale for bringing the agenda about the senior citizens that has been neglected for some time, and I attended the luncheon today with some of your staff members and mayor and council members, and I just want to say that I was very unhappy of how it's done. I have lived here 49 years, and through those 49 years, we have put up with mayors, council members, city managers, staff, and I can probably show you in ten hands mention how many have lasted here in this town. We have put up with a lot of things that they promised people, and they do. We go through changes in ordinance, zoning, and they change everything, and then they leave, and we're stuck with it. I feel that the seniors got a raw end of what y'all discussed today. They had been promised a property to have a building. They had already done all the plans as far as the architecture, and now they're, they're saying it's going to be a bundle. I don't think that was right. There's so many things that could have been saved, and you've had parks, and you need to think of the senior citizens. And as a senior citizen, I feel that that's not right, what y'all discussed with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chapa. All right, next up, Ms. Susan Raina.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Susan Raina. I am a resident of Kyle at 186 Johnny Cake Drive, but I'm here tonight as a member of the Board of Preservation Associates Incorporated, and I just wanted to invite you all and everyone that's here and everyone in the city, though I don't know how we'd hold you all, but we try, to an event tomorrow night at the library at 6:00 PM on the origin of Kyle. So if anyone's ever wanted to learn more about how Kyle actually got started with lots of facts and figures and such, we'd love to have you tomorrow night at 6:00 PM at the library. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Raina, thank you. So I was, it's so interesting you just mentioned that, and I was having a conversation with a friend of mine, long resident of Kyle. He likes to go metal detecting, and he has gone to places and learned about history of Kyle, which I know he will love this. Is there any other times he will be doing this? Because I won't be able to go tomorrow, but I would love to attend.
Sure. Well, we actually plan to meet every month on the, I guess this is the third Wednesday. Is that right? Anyway, the same, the same time every month, but there'll be slightly different information presented, but I certainly would be glad to bring some information back to you.
That would be great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, that is all the citizen comments forums that I have in front of me. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward and speak? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close citizen comments period. It's now closed. Next up is agenda order per the rules of council. Is there anyone who wishes to make suggestions on amending the order? Councilmember Parsley.
I would like to see if we can move Agenda Items 10 and 11 to the bottom of the agenda.
Okay. Does anybody have any objections to that? All right, seeing none. Anyone else? All right. Next up is Agenda Item Number Five under Appointments. Approve a resolution appointing seven individuals to fill seats one through seven of the newly formed Community Gardens Committee. I'll go ahead and bring up Agenda Item Six as well. Approve a resolution appointing seven individuals to fill seats one through seven of the newly formed Trails Committee. Ms. Espinoza.
Mayor and council, Mariana Espinoza, Parks and Recreation Director for the record. Let me go ahead and share my screen. For the first one is the Community Gardens Committee. Let me share and take some minute here. Hold on a second. Okay. So as mayor and council you are aware, we have approved the formation of a Community Gardens Committee. That was done on March 7th. Just a quick review, we interviewed 25 applicants. We reached out to all 25, and we interviewed 14. At the recommendation for the number of seats of council, staff does recommend to appoint seven seats, and the Community Gardens Committee will meet the first Wednesday of every month at 6:00 PM here at City Hall with their first meeting in August. The initial resolution was approved on March 7th, and today we are requesting to amend the resolution to include the appointees of the following individuals. For Seat One, Lacey Mount. Seat Two, Stephanie Chup. Seat Three, Judy Lyons. Seat Four, Luisa Hussein. Seat Five, Rebecca Price. Seat Six, the Lotus Perez. And Seat Seven, Raylin Monks. All applicants are here today in the building. Ms. Price is online virtual if there are any questions. We do represent a total of six different Kyle subdivisions out of these seven appointees. We are very, very excited to get going, so if there are any further questions.
Would you like to go ahead and present on the Trails Committee as well?
Let me go ahead and pull that one up. In same verbiage for the first two slides, March, in March is when the formation was approved. For the Trails Committee, we received 17 applications. We interviewed 13, and we recommend to appoint seven. They will meet the last Wednesday of every month at 6:00 PM here at City Hall, so their first meeting will be next Wednesday at 6:00. And the seven appointees we recommend for appointment are Seat One, Silvia Diaz. Seat Two, Daniel Ricardo Laurel. Seat Three, Dorian Perez. Seat Four, Sarah Walker. Seat Five, Lori Black. Seat Six, Anne Rivas. And Seat Seven, Joshua Keller. And of these seven appointees, it's a representation of six different Kyle subdivisions as well. And everyone is here. If there are any questions, Mr. Keller is unable to join us tonight.
All right, thank you. Want to get a motion on the table?
Mayor, I'd like to approve Items Number, Agenda Item Number Five for the seats of the newly formed Community Gardens Committee.
Okay, motion is to approve Agenda Item Five made by Mayor Protem, seconded by, I don't remember which one, Councilmember Flores Cale. Is there discussion on that motion? Thank y'all very much for being here. I know it's been a long process, and so looking forward to seeing the fruits of what comes out of that. Councilmember Heiser.
Mariana, when did you say the meetings are going to be?
So the Trails Committee will meet the last Wednesday of the month at 6:00 PM here at City Hall, and the Community Gardens Committee meets the first Wednesday of the month at 6:00 PM at City Hall.
Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. All right.
Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number Six to fill the seats one through seven for the Trails Committee.
Second.
All right, motion by Mayor Protem, seconded by Councilmember Flores Cale. We approve Agenda Item Number Six. Is there discussion on that motion? Councilmember Flores Cale.
I just, before we move forward, I just wanted to say thank you to all of the applicants. It means a lot to have this much interaction with the city and the residents. This is the direction that I love to see the city going, and so, and thank you for being present, because anybody that knows me knows that it matters, and I know one's virtual, and I want to say thank you for that. And then the other one is not present, but I will try to be a little graceful. Never have I voted like that before, so I just want to say thank you, and it means a lot to have everybody involved.
All right, anyone, Councilmember Parsley.
I just want to make a quick comment. I know Mr. Keller is not present, but I, he's one of those very, very involved residents, so I am really happy that he made, he made the seat, and I know he's going to do a great job.
All right, anyone else? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. All right, next up, Agenda Item Number Seven, approve a resolution authorizing and reappointments to the Planning and Zoning Commission for the term of October 1st, 2023 through September 30th, 2025. Ms. Atkinson.
Thank you. Will Atkinson, Planning Director for the record. Let me pull this up real quick. Okay, so before you here tonight, we have two considerations for reappointments. Our recently elected chair, Sarah Onkin, for Planning and Zoning Commission, and Vice Chair Steve Delory. They are finishing up terms that they were, they filled. They were a year terms only, they remained her, and they are wanting to be reconsidered to refill two new terms, and so we fully support it.
All right, thank you, Ms. Atkinson. I just want to say that I watch a lot of PNC meetings virtually. I don't like to come to the meetings present and be present, but I do watch, and y'all are fantastic council members, or Planning and Zoning Commission members.
That's the future, that's the key.
The future, yeah, there you go. So, you know, it's, it's, it's kind of a interesting way how that process went, you know, in order to make those appointments, but I'm very proud to have both of you on the committee, and congratulations on your elections as chair and vice chair. With that, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, motion by Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Flores Cale. Is there discussion on the motion? Mayor Protem.
Same thing. I watch it online, and Miss Onkin, again, congratulations on your appointment. All of you bring value to the decisions when it comes to planning and zoning, and y'all have some real deep conversations, and it's very much appreciated. Thank you very much.
All right, any other discussion? Councilmember Flores Cale.
Thank you. I just want to say Sarah did such a good job at the last combined meeting that we had. It was refreshing to see some vulnerability, and it's, but she took it with stride, and she, she did a great job. And so, thank you for that. That's, even though it's something really little, it's really inspiring to see somebody out there when you're like, I don't really know what to do, but this is what I'm going to do it. So congratulations on the chair, and I have no doubt y'all do a good job.
Councilmember Zuniga.
Yeah, I'd also like to say thank you, and when I watch those meetings, y'all work like a really strong cohesive unit and like a really good team. So that's, that's something I'm impressed with, y'all's professionalism and ability to listen and, and work together. So thank you for, for what y'all do on that board.
Attention to detail. Very good.
Yes.
Anyone else? All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. All right, next up is Agenda Item Number Eight, Park and Recreation Professional Day Proclamation. Councilmember Parsley.
Thank you, mayor. All right. So I'm going to read a little thing that I was trying to put together. I truly love and appreciate all of the departments and staff members that are part of the team Kyle, and one of the many reasons I decided to run for council was to personal connectivity and being able to advocate for events, green spaces, the ability to get people together, getting to know each other, meet residents, no matter what neighborhood they're coming from, and enjoy what their taxes are paying for. Our Parks and Recreation Department made that possible, and I'm truly grateful for having staff members that are so welcome to ideas and suggestions. I love bringing ideas to Mariana, and she finds a way to make them happen and bring them to council from a gingerbread house idea contest to having a Kyle trivia questions for trivia night when, when we went as a group, researching a crazy misting system that has got so much promotion, and even when probably not the best time to bring it forward, a fall festival, you know, wink, wink, hopefully at some point. So I feel like our local Parks and Recreation programs are a path to healthy, happy, and connected communities. On any given day, someone is being positively affected through Parks and Recreation, whether it's planning our community garden, and I'm really happy that we have, you know, a committee right now, or planning the trails, or walking our trails, joining a class, or simply strolling during the market days. Parks and Recreation programs connect communities to nature and help preserve open space, provide health and wellness opportunities, and essential services, and all connect all people, making our city a more desirable destination and place to live. So I, I am so grateful for our Parks Department, again, for all the departments, but Parks have, hold a very special spot in my heart, because I'm all about the events. I've always been, since being on that Rec Committee for my, my neighborhood. So with that, I would like to make a proclamation for the Parks and Recreation Month. So it's the city council proclamation, whereas the Parks and Recreation is an integral part of communities throughout the country, including the city of Kyle, and whereas Parks and Recreation provides health and wellness, and whereas Parks and Recreation increases the city of Kyle's economic prosperity, and whereas Parks and Recreation is fundamental to the environment, well-being of our community. Whereas the city of Kyle, Parks and Recreation Department includes 28 full-time employees who maintain our parks, trails, offer recreational programs, and host citywide special events, whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month. Now, therefore, we proclaim that, I, Travis Mitchell, Daniela Parsley, city council member of the city of Kyle, designated month of July as Parks and Recreation Month, and acknowledged July 21st as Park and Recreation Professional Day. So I brought a little treat for all of our Parks staff members. I don't know if they're all in here, so if you don't mind, and I can just like call them by name.
Do you want to call them up one at a time, or?
Yes, I will do it really quick, so hopefully it won't take that long.
All right.
All right. Do we have Shane Boyer? And I pronounce the names really bad, so I apologize in advance. Okay, I have Amy Garcia. Thank you. Benito Pereira. Is Benito here? Yeah. Can you hand them over? Okay, John Gutierrez. No, John. Okay, Richard Ibarra. There he goes. Sotero Nino. Frank Rodriguez. Says Nino. Do we have a Frank here? Frank Rodriguez here? No, okay. Terry Martin. Okay. Stephen Cedillo. Ruben Luna. Ruben. Angel Perez. Amanda Fluid. No Amanda. Okay. Nicolas Garza. Nicolas Garza. Joy Villarreal. Stacy Anderson. Where's Stacy? Angel Cadena. Angel Cadena here. Yes, no? No. Okay, sorry. Rachel Acevedo. Martine Rangel. Shiva Ali. Shiva. Brooke Collins. Thank you. I'm going to leave this one for last. Claudia Rocha. Thank you. Justin Garza. No, okay. Ashley Gonzalez. Arthur Samaripa. Okay, we have two more. Noroberto Centeno. Noroberto, no. Okay. Jimmy Gonzalez. And our one and only Mariana Espinoza. So Mariana, I'm going to give you the little bag, and I know, I don't know if you want to say anything. I'm going to leave, give you a bag with the rest of the treats.
I don't want to ruin it, but I think we forgot your list.
What? Oh, I have, I mean, there are extras in here. There are extras. Mariana, did you wanted to say anything? I know that you had some facts, but.
Just really briefly, we want to thank mayor and council, city management, for all the continued support of our Parks Department. We do have our board chair, Amanda Stark, here as well, as our board member, Laura Lee Harris, as well as our board member, Daisy Santos, and we're extremely grateful for the support and recommendations from our board. Just really, really quick to the staff, as always, every year, I just want to say thank you for everything you guys do. We have 28 members in the Parks Department and oversee 581 acres of parkland. Just four years ago, we had about six to eight programs, and now we're running 22 programs and 49 special events a year. So we've made great progress over the years, and it's all due to everyone in the blue shirts behind me. They're incredible, really, really incredible, and we thank you all for celebrating Parks and Rec Month with us.
It's Ruben Luna, right?
Ruben.
Yes. Right there. Mariana, here you go. Sorry. Sorry.
Let's do it. All right, photo time.
Up or down?
Yeah, it's a lot of...
Any toast?
Good job, guys.
Good job, everyone.
Is the chair on the way?
What is that?
On the count of three. One, two, three. Perfect, thank y'all.
All right, we're going to take a hard four-minute break and reconvene at 7:40. 8:00 PM. Next up is Agenda Item Number Nine, Receive a Report, Hold Discussion, Provide Staff Direction Regarding Misting System at Mary Calherson City Square Park.
May I say something quick before the presentation? And you can come over, Mariana. So, I'm going to take full responsibility for this to be on the agenda, and I am just going to say I'm extremely grateful we have a City Manager that doesn't let us put everything we just want to throw in the agenda without the backup information. So, I appreciate Parks for bringing this forward for us to have a discussion and see if this is something we should be considering or not, or if there are other options that we can look into. Thank you.
Mayor and Council, Mariana Espinoza, Parks and Recreation Director. As Councilmember Parsley mentioned, the idea of a misting system at Mary Calherson Park was just an idea from Councilmember Parsley, is what could it be, if anything? So, staff, we're directed to obtain some official, unofficial cost estimates, which we did, and so this presentation is based off the largest misting system that we could probably put at the Mary Calherson Park. It's called El Capitan. And so, just a rough overview, to miss the entire promenade would be about $8,000, and the promenade is the walkway that runs straight through the middle of the park. If we were to miss all four quadrants of the park, we're looking at roughly approximately $32,000, and those are one-time costs, not including ongoing maintenance. The misting system utilizes about four gallons of water per minute just to miss the promenade only, that's the walking area, and approximately 16 gallons per minute to miss the entire park. Again, those are just estimates based off the company's rough luck without doing an official quote. It does come with a filtration system and all supplies needed to install the misting system at the park. So, the promenade is in this photo here where the yellow lines are, that's the walkway through the park, and then all four quadrants that we looked at, possible spaces where you might want to put a misting system, are the most shaded areas where there's seating available. So, the misting system can be turned on and off at any time by staff, so we would definitely have it on a watering schedule if it were something that council wanted to move forward with. If there's ever a water drought restriction, you just turn it off. You don't use it during that time, and it can be adjusted at any time. So, this is just an estimate of the hottest times of the days. You know, there's a lot of events on Saturdays, so that would be adjusted accordingly, and it would be seasonal during the warmer months, but available year-round if there ever was a need to have to have it year-round. And here's just a couple of photos of the misting system that this estimate is based off of, and I think there's one more. And so, the options in front of council today is to either provide direct staff to move forward with posting an RFP and adding a misting system to all quadrants of the park, to provide staff direction to add a misting system to only certain parts of the park, which would be the promenade, or to specified areas of the park, or just not to direct staff to move forward at all.
Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Parsley, go ahead.
Okay. This was basically brought, I mean, it was an idea. I know we have a couple of splashpads coming up. We have events that we hold at this park very often, like Market Days. It was really an idea to try to have something to help cool not only our vendors, but the people who visit the park. I am one to not go to Market Days because it's so hot. I really, I just cannot do it. It's really impossible to be outside in 105-degree weather. I do know the misting system does not recycle water, so it will be just a wasted water on the ground. I don't know if there are other alternatives or any other ideas that Parks could think that we can bring forward to help cool down residents that come during Market Days. For example, I don't know if large fans, if there is anything else that will utilize a less amount of water or not water at all to help cool down.
So, we currently have added additional water igloos out, as well as a cooling tent with a mister inside the tent and fans.
Okay, so I've just opened for discussion.
So, Mariana, you said something I thought was important there. You said that in drought season, there's a difference between heat and drought. Sometimes they go hand-in-hand, sometimes they don't. Even when it's raining and we're having plenty of water, oftentimes, it's still very hot, especially at Mary Calherson where we have very regular events. I noticed that during stage-two drought restrictions, the fountain is turned off, for example. So, we could set a policy very clearly if we wanted to say, "But for drought seasons where we're in a restrictive period for water use, and when water is ample, we could use the systems, but if we're in a stage-two drought, for example, we wouldn't," and could either scale back or eliminate during that period. That's correct?
That is correct, and the fountain is a perfect example of that, when we do have to shut it off.
Okay, further comments?
Me.
Councilmember Forrest Kales.
Thank you, and thank you for bringing this forward. I am not in favor of doing this, like, we borrowed water last year. This year, we're in an extreme drought. I don't know if it's a good choice of money, if all we do is just put it up and then use it during certain times. I think we need to be in a better place as far as a city, and this isn't for you, let me look over here, be in a better place as far as a city to kind of make a choice like this. Do I think it's a good idea? I do, and I think if we had the water, this would be the way I'd want to go. But with that said, I think it's an even better idea if we can get some fans out there, if we can get some big, like, industrial fans, because it is really hot, and the wind might help with that temperature, but the water, I think, is just a big ask from the city and the residents right now, because I know I got people upset that they can't even water their yard, and so even just to set it up, I think, would be a little bit controversial, and I'm not really wanting to do that.
Additional comments? Just to be clear, what we are saying is that during a period of drought, such as now, the misters would not be used, but if we are not in a period of drought, they would be used. And so, the question is, when there is water available, would we like to have misters, especially for City Square Park?
And they would be on a schedule during either the peak times or when events are going on, or however directed.
Not, I would think, at least for events, you know, like Market Days, where we really have a high traffic, if there is anything that we could offer to help cool down. I see people in tents. I drive by on my AC, wish I could buy a shop. I just, I'm not one of those people, but if there was anything that we could do to help cool down or help it, make it easier for residents to walk by and not get a heat stroke, then it is, that was the intention of this item.
Mayor, please.
Okay. It seems like we're already taking those protocols already, right?
For special events, for the Market Day specifically, we have a cooling tent with a fan in case someone does become overheated, as well as additional water igloos throughout the market.
Okay. It's also about education, too, right? It's our responsibility as a city to educate people, "Hey, it's hot out there, don't exercise, don't go out." So, I feel that when you go outside to these events, you know, we could provide some kind of protocols where we have cooling tents, where we have fans. Also want to make sure that the people are hydrated themselves, okay, especially going out to these events. It is hot, I understand that, but having this misting system would probably, again, cost money, and then also, would it be best interest to be using this, especially during drought or in heat? I think it's just a matter of educating the public to say, "If you're going to be out there, make sure you bring water, make sure you wear clothing that's not so heavy, that wears light colors, and just take the necessary precautions if you're going to be outside." If we provide that, and then they have vendors there that have water, and they sell drinks and so forth, it's just anything else, like when you go to ACL or South by Southwest, you got to kind of take that precaution that it's going to be hot out there. Now, if we already taken the protocols to where we have the emergency setup there to where if people are getting dehydrated or getting too overwhelmed, we have those tents available for them, but I just think this right here, it just, it's hard for me, it's a really hard sell, because it's just, it's hot all year long.
I have a question, and I know Benito may have shared something with me regarding portable devices. Am I wrong?
He may have been referring to, so when we have a cooling tent, we do put like the portable AC fan unit in there that has a mister. We do, that's an option for the cooling tents.
Okay, just for the tent? Okay.
Any additional comments?
I wish we could do an itty-bitty splashpad in there, just to have kids to jump in and out that recycles water, because it's one of the most visited parks, to be honest. It's a park where the Market Days is being hauled, it's where most of the events take place, so...
Yeah, it's highly, highly visited, and, you know, we have Casa Garcia's in town with misters, we have other restaurants all over in particular, they're not trying to educate people and say, "Here, have some water." Those misters provide incredible relief to folks, and it makes the outdoor space more enjoyable, but I do understand that there might be fear to start a program like this in the middle of a drought, even though we're saying we wouldn't run them in a drought, just too scary.
Can we get fans? Sorry.
Thank you. I am, I'd love to have them. It's a nice-to-have, not a need-to-have. What I would be comfortable doing is allocating money in the budget, but not ordering them until a later date when we can have a discussion around water. That I would be more comfortable with, but I don't want to buy them if we're, there's still uncertainty, and if we're not going to use it right now, why spend the money on it? But I'm okay allocating the money, and then if we end up not doing it in the future, we can give it to Mariana for something else.
And we currently don't have fans, correct, allocated in different areas of the...
So, we have three of the industrial-sized, large fans that we put out during special events, but they're not just out there on a daily basis during the day.
That is something I'd like to consider, maybe having them, and I know Ms. Lyle and I, that she came to the coffee last night, and we kind of discussed the same thing, talk about the fans and the trees, because that's what I think it will make the most sense, you know, if we were to have fans in the trees to try to help cool down or just circulate air in the park. I don't know if that's something we could consider.
Just like on a regular day, not a non-special?
Yeah, exactly.
Just generally, fans, and when it's an outdoor fan, an extreme heat just pushes hot air, it's like walking up to a heater. Misters actually do an incredible job of cooling folks off, so it would be a, but for the fact that in a drought, we wouldn't use them. When it's hot, like you say, it's hot all year round, that's an argument for the misters, not against. We're not in drought all year round, and if we are in drought, we don't have to use them during that time, but anyway, I think we're going to have to wait. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mariana.
All right, next up is Agenda Item Number Twelve, Consent Agenda Presentation.
Mayor, we do not have a presentation for any of the consent items, but if there's questions, we'll be happy to address those.
Does anybody have any questions on any items on consent motions? Councilmember Forrest Kales.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Items 13 through 16.
Motion by Councilmember Forrest Kales, seconded by Councilmember Parsley. There's discussion on the motion. Motion is to approve. All in favor, say aye. Aye? All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, Agenda Item 17, First Reading, Proven Ordinance to Reduce the Speed Limit on RM 150 Veterans Drive from 55 miles per hour to 45 miles per hour from Dove Hollow Drive to Silverado Drive from 45 to 40, from Silverado Drive to West Center Street, and to install, and to install a school zone with a speed limit of 25 miles per hour during designated times from Porter Street to Cochran Street. Mr. Barbara.
Just wanted to let you know what the process was for adding in these school zones in particular, but we did get a request from the principal at Wallace Middle School to try to make it safer for the kids crossing Veterans Drive there at Greg Drive, and so what we did is we worked with Tech dot to not only look at that situation, but also to lower the speed limits in that area. Harper and I talked about this project, and we remember that several area engineers ago, we asked for the same thing, and we were told no, it was too far from the school, but apparently this time, they heard us, and heard about the sorry issues that were happening there, and they decided to go ahead and approve the school zone in that area.
I think we had some council members involved with that as well, it might have been, Councilmember Heiser, I think you were involved. You want to speak to this?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to staff for making this happen so quickly. The wheels of government obviously move very slowly, but this was, I went to speak to, I think, like, six different classes of eighth graders at Wallace and asked them to kind of give me some feedback on their experience of going to school, and gave them some parameters of the types of feedback for which I was looking, and a couple of the kids walked to hometown Kyle to go home and talk about how the cars whizzing past them as they're walking down the street. And so, you know, I told them I would do whatever I can to try to get this done, so I'm just very happy, number one, that this moved quickly, so thank you, but also that we can show young kids that government actually can do something positive for their lives, even as kids, when they don't necessarily pay attention to all the things that, and the realities of being an adult. So, this is something I'm very thankful to, that you guys were able to get done, so...
Thank you.
Councilmember Zunga.
Thank you, Councilmember Heiser, for that backstory and for getting involved in doing what you, what you could to help those kids at Wallace, and thank you, Leon, for looking at the speed limit sign, too.
Councilmember Forrest Kales.
Thank you. I just want to make mention that there was a stop sign that was taken down in this area, and it was very controversial, because that's what the kids were using to cross that street. And so, whatever it takes to make that area safer, I'm already surprised that it's not a school zone, and I was looking through all the options that were proposed to us, and by the way, this I really appreciate. It was like, "These are your options?" And it felt really good when I read this, and I don't think I had any questions on this agenda. So, excellent work. I'm reading through the three options. Mine would be to approve the ordinance to create the school zone and lower the speed limits. I think that's a great option for everybody to have, especially since we've taken that stop sign down, and safety was a big issue there. And so, can we also make sure that there's, crosswalk is like freshly painted, I know there's one across the street from, it's at Wallace, and then I think there's like a chicken place that you can eat at, and there's a Dollar General across the street, and I know a lot of kids cross that street, and I don't know if, I don't know if it's faded or it's just not there, but that would be a great addition to have to that school zone as well.
So, it's there, but it is faded, so if you want to make that motion and then also direct staff to repaint those crosswalks, I think it'd be perfect.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve the ordinance to create a school zone and lower the speed limits, as well as add fresh paint to the crosswalk that's in front of the school across the street from Chicken Place, Chicken Express.
Second.
All right, motion by Councilmember Forrest Kales, seconded by Councilmember Heiser, that we approve the recommendations from staff and also direct staff to paint those crosswalks. There's discussion on the motion. Mayor, please.
Slow down. That's all you got to do. It's Trevor behavior. Slow down.
All right. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed. All right, motion carries unanimously. Is there any objection to this ordinance being finally passed? Seeing none, this ordinance is finally passed. I don't know if it's faded or it's just not there, but that would be a great addition to have to that school zone as well.
So it's there, but it is faded, so if you wanna make that motion, and then also direct staff to repaint those crosswalks, I think it'd be perfect.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve the ordinance to create a school zone and lower the speed limits, as well as add fresh paint to the crosswalk that's in front of the school across the street from Chicken Place, Chicken Express.
All right, motion by Councilmember Floris Kael, seconded by Councilmember Heiser, that we approve the recommendations from staff, and also direct staff to paint those crosswalks. Is there discussion on the motion? Mayor Proton.
Slow down. All you gotta do. It's Trevor behavior. Slow down.
All right. All his favors say aye. Aye. All opposed. All right, motion carries unanimously. Is there any objection to this ordinance being finally passed? Seeing none, this ordinance is finally passed. All right.
Thank you.
Question. Oh, did we skip agenda items 10 and 11? They're gonna be at the end, okay. All right, thank you.
All right, next up, agenda item number 18, discussion of possible action to amend the city's current gas pipeline utility easement to better align with surrounding cities and counties. Councilmember Floris Kael.
All right, thank you. I just brought this forward with the hopes that we could have the development within the area be the same with corresponding cities, and so just after reading it and trying to figure out, was this an excessive amount, was this a correct amount, I just thought maybe that's something that we could talk about?
Okay.
Unless you want me to make a motion, I don't mind making a motion. My only question would be, like, do we make it the same size as the easement? Because this is a setback that we're gonna talk about. Okay. So I'd like to make a motion to have staff bring back an ordinance to amend the restricted area or the setback for natural gas transmission pipelines from 200 feet to 100 feet. Everybody, I'm trying to find a happy medium.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Floris Kael, seconded by Councilmember Parsley, that we reduce the setback for natural gas pipelines in our ordinance from 200 feet to 100 feet, that we direct staff to bring that ordinance back. Is there discussion on the motion? The pipeline ordinance references the setback for gas pipelines of a particular size, so that's not clear in the motion, but I think staff understands what we're trying to bring back. So do you need us to clarify that more? Because most of our gas pipelines don't have a setback at all.
I have the ordinance, and I can have, I have the number and everything to that. It would be section three, areas involving new construction, letter A. Do I need to make the whole motion again, or is that good?
I think you're clear on that, right, Paige?
And me and Paige were talking about like the actual, she said if we reduce the easement width, which is 50 feet, it would be 25 feet, is that what you're saying, in your, like, in our discussion?
Well, there's a, there's a current setback for hazardous pipelines of 25 feet from the pipeline itself, and for the natural gas transmission pipeline, the setback is 200 feet. So, you know, the council within its discretion can set that to what it thinks is appropriate. The easement for the natural gas pipelines is 50, is 50 feet, so there's existing easement over that, if you may.
Fifty feet width to width.
Width to width.
The setback is from the center point, so if you wanted to make it where the setback coincided with the easement, you would need to change it to 25 feet.
Correct.
Or eliminate it altogether, because you can't build an easement. So if you eliminate it altogether, or if you set it at 25 feet, it's the same difference. But at 100 feet is an additional 75 on each side outside of the easement.
Correct.
Is that where you wanna be?
Yeah, I mean, I just, I just want council to, I'll be on board with this, like, if it were up to me, I would like to make it the same, but if it's gonna be a no, I don't want, I don't want that either, you know. It's important that we work together, so.
Well, we have a motion in a second. Do you wanna, motion to amend, or you just wanna go? We want him to call a vote.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion to amend, my apologies. I'd like to amend my motion to have staff bring back an ordinance to amend the restricted area or the setback for natural gas transmission pipelines from 200 feet to none. And that is gonna be under section, sorry, three of the ordinance 1136, 3A, and it's under new construction.
I've got a, I'd feel.
We have a motion on the table.
Sure.
So the motion is to amend, as opposed to 100 feet, which is the motion on the table, it's to eliminate the setback and allow for the easements development restrictions to prevail. Is there a second on that motion? So the 50 feet easement would be the limited amount? All right, motion fails for lack of a second, but the original motion of 100 feet is still on the table. Paige, did you have some?
Just to clarify, what we'd understand the motion to be, if council gives direction on this, is that this would apply to natural gas transmission pipelines of 30 inches or larger.
Correct, that's what I was trying to clarify with you as well. So we're cutting it in half. It's currently 400 feet width to width, and now it will be 200 feet width to width. Is there discussion on that motion? All his favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Nay. Motion carries five to two. All right. Next up is agenda item number 10, receive a report, hold a discussion, and provide staff direction regarding qualifications, responsibilities, composition, and terms of the city's boards, committees, and commissions. Mr. Smits.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Amber Smits, Assistant City Manager. For the record, we have a presentation for you. Okay, so this item was brought up during a presentation of the amendments on the boards, committees, and commissions ordinance at the June 6th council meeting. The council expressed a desire to review all of the boards, committees, and commissions qualifications, responsibilities, compositions, and terms. And then further discussion was had on this topic at the visiting workshop, and staff was directed to bring forward information for discussion at a council meeting. So that's why we're here tonight. Here is a list of all of the city's boards, commissions, and committees. We have the Arts and Cultural Commission, the Board of Adjustment, Charter Review Commission, Civil Service Commission, Community Gardens Committee, Community Policing Commission, Economic Development and Tourism Board, Ethics Commission, Kyle Area Youth Advisory Council, Kyle Housing Authority, Library Board, Parks and Recreation Board, Planning and Zoning Commission, Trails Committee, and the Train Depot Board. So some definitions we thought that you might be interested in learning about, per our city code, is a board is created by ordinance and members appointed by council. The ordinance determines the scope and authority of a board. Committees are created by resolution and members appointed by council. Resolution determines the scope and authority of committee and meeting requirements, dissolves one year after creation upon completion of its purpose or upon abolishment by the city council with or without cause. And a commission is created by ordinance and members appointed by council, purpose and authority defined by the ordinance and state and local law, established and may be dissolved at the discretion of city council. Terms generally, unless they're otherwise pointed out in the later slides, are as follows per section 2-43 in our city code. Unless a different term length is established by city council for members of a particular board or commission, a person appointed as a regular member to a board or commission shall serve one term of two years and may be reappointed for two more terms. Regular members may serve past their appointed or reappointed terms until the council reappoints or replaces them, but in no event shall a regular member serve for longer than 60 days after their term expires unless authorized by state law or the Texas Constitution. The first is the Arts and Cultural Commission. The composition, eligibility, and qualifications for this commission, seven voting members, all with interest in the arts. Four members have to have knowledge and passion for art and related fields. Two will be citizen representatives, one member will be appointed from the business community, and then there is one ex officio non-voting member that shall be a member of the city council and shall serve as a liaison between the commission and the city council. So just a note on this, this is not, this board is really not a commission according to our definitions, because there is no state or local law, other than our ordinance that establishes the commission. So it's a little outside of the bounds, it probably should be Arts and Cultural Board. The other thing is that the council, or the mayor has not appointed, the council has not confirmed that vote on the ex officio non-voting member of the council to serve on this commission. So just some notes there. This is not required by charter, it's created by ordinance 1178 and 1242. 1242 added the cultural component to this board, commission. General duties, they work through the library, that's in the, the library director, it's in the ordinance. They are to present an annual report to the council by October 1 on the status of their art program. They serve in an advisory capacity to the council. They advise council on the use of funds and funding opportunities for local art projects and activities, and then they're also authorized to solicit donations for the Kyle art community. The Board of Adjustment is required by charter, section 10.08, established by ordinance number 438 and 852, in accordance with chapter 211 of the Local Government Code. The general duties of the BOA is to be responsible for hearing and determining appeals regarding the refusal of building permits, appeals resulting from administrative decisions, and they can permit an exception to or variation from the zoning regulations. And then this board also serves as the city's sign control board, which hears requests for exceptions to the sign code. The composition, eligibility, and qualifications of this board, five members appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the council. They have to reside in the city, terms do not expire. There are four alternate members permitted, however, these alternate members have not been appointed by the mayor and confirmed by council, so right now we don't have any alternate members. They are removable by the council after a public hearing and then written charges. And then they cannot hold another city office, and former council members cannot be a member of this board until one year after completion of their term. They're also quasi judicial board, so once they make their decision, then it goes to district court.
Amber, you may not know the answer to this question, it's off the cuff, but do you know the year that we are by charter supposed to bring the review? Is that 25? Did you say it was every five years or every three years? Do we have to create the commission? Charter Review Commission.
Five years.
Okay, and we.
And it's reviewed every, Jennifer, Jennifer, the charter's reviewed. Every five years.
So when did we last have a charter review commission? 2020?
Twenty twenty five.
We did the commission, so 2025, just as an example.
Yes. Charter Review Commission, it was required by the charter established by ordinance number 646. Their duties are appointed by the council every five years to review and recommend any changes to the city's charter, which must be amended through election. These recommendations last came forward on November 2020 ballot. Composition, eligibility, and qualifications are appointed by the council, seven-person commission, six-month terms. Civil Service Commission, this is required by state law, chapter 143, the Local Government Code. No reference in the city's code of ordinances, but basically, the city at one point in time held an election to become a civil service police department, and with that requirement, they had to be a population of 10,000 plus, they had to be a paid police department, and then they had to have a successful election. The general duties of this commission is to review policies and procedures, and hear and make determinations on personnel matters for the police department. The composition, eligibility, and requirements, three members serving staggered three-year terms. A person appointed to the commission must be of good moral character, be a US citizen, be a resident of the municipality for more than three years, be over 25 years old, and not have held a public office within the preceding three years. And these folks are appointed by the city manager and confirmed by the council, and again, that's state law. The Community Gardens Committee is not required by charter, established by resolution 1355. Their duties are to provide recommendations on the design and installation of the postout community garden, also includes maintenance of the garden and establishing garden rules. It's a seven-person temporary committee, and it was, it's established through July of 2024, just recently established tonight. The Community Policing Commission is required by charter, established by ordinance 1264. Summary and purpose, establishment of commission approved by voters in November of 2020, also called Proposition F. Committee to collaborate with the police department to have oversight over the development of standard operating policies and strategies, providing timely data sharing and deploying resources. Duties, primary duties to collaborate and work with the PD to annually prepare and present to the city council a report within the scope approved by council pursuant to section 2-133B that reviews and provides data regarding police department standard operating policies and strategies, data sharing and communication, and the effectiveness of resources allocated to the police department, crime statistics within the city, and community engagement and education efforts. There are additional duties approved by Prop F, but that's the summary. It's a seven-person commission, city manager, assistant city managers, and one selected council member to interview the qualified applicants. Members shall meet the qualifications as outlined and approved in Proposition F. Economic Development and Tourism Board is not required by charter, established by ordinance 853. Ordinance 1189 speaks to the qualifications for membership. It serves in an advisory capacity to the city council, recommend options for the promotion of tourism and economic development, communicate coordinate with city staff. The board shall report to the council once each quarter following the board's quarterly meeting. Qualifications follow the city policy in terms of their composition, eligibility, and qualifications. Residency requirements may be exempted by the city council, shall include at a minimum representation from key local stakeholders, including major employer, utility, healthcare, higher ed, and tourism. Ex officio members may be appointed from key sectors and/or stakeholders. Members shall maintain confidentiality and abide by all prevailing ethics. The Ethics Commission is required by the charter, established by ordinance number 961 in accordance with Local Government Code, chapter 171. They advise the council on the content and requirements of the ethics policies and ordinance, hear and decide complaints filed pursuant to such policies and ordinance, establish, amend, and rescind rules and procedures governing its own internal organization and operations, prepare reports as needed to recommend to the mayor and city council needed changes in ethical standards or procedures, takes other such action as is necessary to perform its duties under part G, Ethics Commission of the Ethics Code. Seven members appointed by the council, each council member appoints one person to the commission, three-year terms to run concurrently with the corresponding council member's terms, and they cannot serve for more than two, three-year terms. Members are supervised by and may be removed by the council pursuant to the charter, and no member of the commission shall be a salaried city officer or employee, an elected public official, a candidate for elected city office, an officer of a political party, a member of a governing body of a taxing entity. The Kyle Area Youth Advisory Council is not required in the charter, and it's established by resolution 806. They are an advisory in nature and created for the purpose of providing a youthful point of view for the Kyle City Council on community affairs and issues. This commission shall provide the opportunity for youth in the city of Kyle to learn about municipal government and to advise Kyle City Council from the perspective of area teens. It's created as a 16-member committee that consists of youth ages 14 to 18 enrolled in ninth through 12th grades, and either reside in the city limits of Kyle or currently attend a high school at Hays CISD School District, or live in the city limits and are homeschooled. And they are selected by the principal of the school where they attend. The Kyle Housing Authority is governed by the Local Government Code, chapter 392. The city has a cooperation agreement with the housing authority. It's not part of the city. They work closely with the community and community organizations to provide low-income housing and resources. Five members, and state statute requires the mayor to appoint the board members. Library Board, not required by the charter, but created by ordinance 705, 1189, and 1272. Provide the city council and the director with advice and recommendations on all policies, rules, and regs regarding the administration of the library and programs and operations. They promote the library's programs and services in the greater Kyle community, and they are also. they are also authorized to solicit donations and gifts for the library. Um, they have seven members on that board. Continued, they shall pass library policies and procedures to include issuance and cost of library cards, uh, maximum checkout time limits for library materials, fine schedules for overdue library materials, fine schedules for lost or severely damaged library materials, and other charges or administrative fees, and other procedural areas of the library Parks and Rec Board is not required by the Charter, it's established by Ordinance 854. They serve as an advisory board of the council, recommend options related to parks and recreation, and they're also authorized to solicit donations for the park. Composition, eligibility, and qualification, seven members, two-year terms. Planning and Zoning Commission is required by the Charter, Section 10 dot 04, in accordance with Chapter 211 of the Local Government Code. They review plats, make recommendations to council on zoning requests in the comprehensive plan, they consider the comprehensive plan amendments, and assist in drafting rules and regs for plating, subdividing, and zoning. They are made up of seven members who reside in city limits, and we can have no less than five members. They are appointed to council for two-year terms. The Trails Committee is not required by Charter, it's established by Resolution 1353. General duties, provide recommendations regarding trail construction and improvements. Uh, they're a seven-person temporary committee, and they're through July of 2024, another committee that was named tonight. Uh, Train Depot Board is not required by Charter, and it's established by Ordinance 445. They serve in an advisory capacity to the council, recommend rules, policies, and procedures related to the operas- operations and programs associated with the Train Depot and their surrounding grounds. They carry out functions and duties as assigned by the council, act as a public forum for concerns related to the Train Depot, advisory oversight to the Train Depot and the surrounding grounds, may review requests for permits for use and make a recommendation on the use of the Train Depot and surrounding grounds. They present an annual report to the council by October 1 on the status of the Train Depot, and they're also authorized to solicit donations and gifts for the Train Depot. They are made of seven members, and they can reside in the city limits or the ETJ, and they are appointed by the mayor with the consent of the coun- council. That's everything. So, questions before y'all tonight? Does the list of boards and commissions still meet the needs of the council and the community? Does council wish to alter the responsibility of any of the assigned boards, committees, and commissions? Does council wish to alter membership requirements, and any other feedback you have for us?
All right. All right, that's a lot. Uh, who wants to go first? Let's try to have our thoughts organized and be as succinct as we can. Councilor Heiser.
Thank you, and I'm probably gonna have a couple different sets of thoughts here. Um, but first thing is I'd like to propose just a conversation for us to have as council around the concept that we heard a little bit about in Prosper, that was, uh, council member Tobias, you referred to as how we implement tasks, task forces, tasks force?
Task.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna think about that one a little more, but, uh, a task force, and I, I got really, I became really interested in the idea of having one, uh, council member be on these boards, and I think, um, you know, I know it's a time commitment from us, but I think that we collectively as a, as elected officials need to do a better job of, of working with the residents on what our vision is, is, uh, council members collectively, and also, you know, more about the, the powers of government and what we can and can't do. A lot of you guys have heard me talk about this recently. So I myself would like to be more, um, you know, present with, um, you know, uh, on one of these committees or boards or commissions, whatever we want to call them, but just as a general guiding thought, I'd like to potentially get to a place at the end of this discussion where, um, you know, we, we could be open to this, uh, additionally, economic development. I, I think, I'd like to get a little bit more into with you, Amber, has there been any discussion internally? Cause I know that we've had some issues there since the last, uh, about six weeks ago now, of what a new makeup could look like if we did have a residency requirement, which I would like to have.
We have not explored that, but we could certainly explore that and bring that back to you all for a discussion at a later meeting.
Okay.
Can I make a suggestion? So there are so many boards, do we wanna go one by one and give feedback if we have, so we can be more organized? Or how do you guys propose that we do this?
I like that idea.
Okay, you wanna go back? I'll try to lead us through that as quickly as I can.
Anyone else have thoughts on how to do that, okay?
If you don't mind, just to piggyback what you're saying about the task force and about having a council member, uh, part of these committees and commissions. Uh, I've been on council for several years now, and, um, I know it's time commitment, but it's also our duty to serve the people in this way. Uh, I really don't have, uh, any reservations for not being on, to be on one, uh, as long as that person that's on council understands that if you're gonna be a liaison to this board, you're not speaking on all of council, okay? You're there to listen, you're there to gather the information, and to be the liaison. I think maybe years ago, where there was always that thought that if we have a council member that's, let's say, I'm on the library board commission, that when I attend the meetings, that I'm giving the library board, well, this is the way I think council's gonna go, and this is how I feel it needs to go, and this is what I could recommend and so forth, and speaking on behalf of council, that should be a no-no. It should be just a liaison part to where you let the boards and the commissions do their part, you're just that person there on the side. So, uh, I don't have a problem if, uh, council, council wants to decide to be part of this, as long as there's that understanding that you are there as liaison, you are there as, uh, as that part in not giving direction on behalf of council.
Um, okay, well, that's not really underneath any particular board, so we can discuss that aspect now, if you want. So I do have extreme reservations about officially commissioning one of our council members to go and be present at a particular board meeting. Uh, number one is a council member's presence at a board or at a commission, uh, is a big deal to the board and the commission there, and your voice, whether you're a voting member or not, is relevant, uh, carries a lot of weight. Uh, to Mayor Protem's, uh, point, uh, the question of what your function and role is, are you there as an individual, or are you there as a representative of the council? Do you speak on behalf of the council? And those are three very different things. So what I heard Mayor Protem say is you never speak on behalf of the council, which I agree with. Number two is that you should not be speaking for yourself. So there's some in the middle where you represent the city council, but yet do not speak on behalf, so you're not there in order to gain individual influence over that board, uh, apart from the city council, and, uh, that is something that we used to do back in the day, and it was abused, uh, and, uh, it was eliminated, and that's the reason that that's not there. Many of the, the things that are, the components of these boards and commissions go back 20 years of various back and forth, we change the boards and commissions' policies all the time, but I would just counsel us, uh, my, my encouragement and caution, uh, is to say that if the council wants to put a member as an official liaison to each individual board, uh, that it has not the possibility, but the probability across all of these boards and commissions of, number one, uh, certain boards and commissions might feel pressured by that, uh, influence, or that person's, uh, presence there, without there being any fault of the council member at all, uh, and they might feel uneasy about doing their business. And then, number two, that there might actually be situations where council members, uh, speak and say things that really bother other council members and cause, uh, conflict and drama, which is something that has happened in the past, so.
I can, I can understand that, sir. I can understand.
I have a quick question, Amber.
I respect that.
Oh, I'm so sorry. It's just quick.
I'm gonna actually get Councilor Floris Kelsey her hand up, I think.
Um, I feel like I'm going a little crazy, I thought we were liaisons, like, I thought I was on the-
Yeah, we're not.
Like, we're not.
We do not have a liaison policy, we have, we've created, and we should have never used the word liaison, because it's tricky. We have a council liaison to the interview panel when that panel is interviewing and recommending back. They are in no way a liaison to the board as an ongoing thing.
Okay.
With the exception of the Arts and Cultural Commission, that does have an ex officio member, that would be a council member, but y'all have not appointed that member. So, yes, we're currently, right now, everybody is just an interview panel member to a certain board and commission.
Yeah, I don't want, I'm not interested in it, I attended a meeting, and it's, it's hard to like figure out your, your place, right?
Right.
And so I was just trying to be part of the group, and then it got a little awkward, and I was like, okay, I, I do not, I don't think it's a good idea. It is not a good idea, we have no business, uh, you know, if you wanna watch it, you can watch it online, but I am with every, I'm with Mayor Mitchell, this is causes some issues, and so for that reason, I have zero interest.
I used to attend the Planning and Zoning Commissions regularly, and just attending and sitting in the room, I would get looks when they would be in the middle of a hard conversation, and they're talking about the city council, they'd be looking and wanting my feedback, even when I was just on the council, I'm not, not the mayor, and I stopped going for that reason, because it was creating, uh, it was creating tension and the possibility for influence, even if I didn't wanna get it, and I will tell you, in the middle of their debates and conversations, I wanted to give my input, in, input and feedback, but that's not, as be usurping council will, was my opinion. Councilor Parsley.
It's just quick, are there any of these boards that are not really active currently?
These are all of our active boards, um, I think they all meet regularly, maybe with the exception of the Train Depot Board, I know that the Youth Advisory Council does not have any members appointed, uh, currently, it is not active. Only when there's a, a request for a variance or an appeal.
Did you say, so is there a difference between the Youth Advisory Ca- Council and the Kyle Area Youth Advisory Council?
No, sorry, I'm using those words.
They're synonymous?
Yes.
So I thought we-
The kayak.
We're, we're in the process of constituting that board, though, right? Okay.
Um, I'd like to get Brian's feedback, you know, on like, the number of boards that we have, and what you think the process has gone. I've gone through the Charter and read the Charter, and then I realized that there is just like four of the committees or boards in the Charter. I would like to make it more compact and see how we can clean it up a little, I don't know what everybody's feelings about it, I don't think that there is, although you read it in the Charter, there is not much of a direction of some of the boards are doing, and to piggyback onto what Councilmember Heiser was saying, I would like to have a task that you assign to a board for them to do. Like initially, my recollection is, when we did the art board, it was for them to provide feedback on art to come to the city. And, and so I don't know if they have already picked an art piece, and they have picked a location for the art piece to go, um, so I, I think if we were to give them a task, and this is what we would like for you guys to bring back recommendations, and, and I don't know if that is outlined anywhere, and I see the Charter, but I, I haven't seen any.
So, so that, that is 100% something that is our prerogative to do, and so, at, I'll take the opposite of what I was saying before, the reality is when council gives direction to a board, that is, that is a really good way, then they, they love that. So we've done that in the past, uh, with the Planning and Zoning Commission, we wanted them to review and address a particular issue, uh, we can do that with the Parks Board, that these Trails Committees that we just, we just set up. If we get really clear on what we want to do, and take a vote and give that direction, they generally relish that, because they know that what they're working on is what we wanna see happen, so when it comes back to us, it's gonna be received well. So I, I agree with you, I don't think we have to change any ordinance, we just have to, from the dais, give that direction to the, uh, to the board, but also to the department head that represents that board to take that forward. Councilor Floris K.
Yeah, um, and something else that kinda bothers me, other than the Parks Board, I don't know if anybody's ever brought us recommendations, and so that's, things just happen, and I'm like, okay, I thought there was kind of like an order of how this process would work, and we've heard nothing from, I don't think, any other commission, other than the Parks and Board, um, and I encourage that always, because I, especially with the arts, because, um, it's not just about having events, I, my hope for that was to have, uh, some art pieces, so, some events as far as like an art show out in, in the park, and so I, I don't know if these are really going as recommend, recommend, recommendation committees, or if they're just doing their own thing, and so I think we kinda need to get that into control and figure out what we want that to look like as well.
100%.
So the, I would say that, you know, in my experience, really, the Arts Board has been the most specific about what their plans and intentions are. Some of that we may feel is appropriate, some of that we may wish that they weren't doing, uh, but it's our prerogative to bring up and amend and alter and take a vote to say that, cause you're right, with, the Arts Board was initially created because we wanted to see art, we wanted to have artists and members of the community who could really dive into that, bring back art recommendations to us, but since we created that art, uh, board and commission, we never gave really specific, we want this number of art pieces at this time, or that, you know, we want one permanent art piece every year at this time, so that we can have it in the budget, we could, we can put all of that specificity into it, and then that gives that commission, uh, and the department head plenty of opportunity there and bandwidth to, uh, bring that back. So, and, and I think honestly, we need to give some of that feedback to the Arts and Cultural Commission, so that, so that there's not that opportunity for discord, and some of it, I think they are working on, like they wanna bring back art pieces, um, and so, and to that, I believe the Arts Board, the library director is the only director that we have with two boards that they meet with regularly, so Amber, do you wanna speak to that, and what your thoughts on that might be?
Correct, and, you know, I have, you know, thoughts about that maybe, you know, maybe that's a lot to take on, especially with the Arts Cultural Commission being brand-new, just getting started, kind of, you know, trying to feel their way around of what council wants them to do. Um, we would have to amend the ordinance since it specifically calls out the library director is, is the liaison from staff, but I'm helping, calling our library director, uh, I plan to be at Thursday's, uh, meeting, um, help set the agenda, and, um, am gonna, you know, make myself available to them, and make sure I'm communicating all of your wishes back to the commission.
So, so we're on the Arts Commission, this subject right here, so number one, should we go and try to find or reassign the Arts Commission to report to another staff member?
That was kinda where I was getting at.
Number two, on this non-voting member of city council, should we look at pulling that back and just keeping it as the seven members only? So we could look at just eliminating the non-member, and then also look at who on city staff, or who could we reassign the Arts Commission to go to?
And I'm happy to, as the Assistant City Manager over the library, take on that role, and I think we could just amend the ordinance so it didn't call out anybody specific, or it lets the discretion up to the city manager as to who was assigned that board responsibility.
And so, going back now, the history behind all the task force, we've had, right Tracy? It's, you know, because that's what it was, we had, I'm gonna do this with so-and-so, I'm gonna do this with Rizzo, I'm gonna do this with, uh, Allison. I think that eliminate, that doing it this way, Mayor, you're right, it eliminated that in those, those council members giving that feedback, where we gave the task to the library board, we gave the task now to the Parks Board to come back with the ideas and so forth, in that way, it just comes to where we just kinda stepped back a little bit. I think that's kinda where it was, Mayor, is that we were, we were doing that because we were trying to give a lot of influence, we saw a lot of things, and so that's where we divided up the three council members to become part of the task force, but like Mayor Mitchell said, there was always that conflict where this was a direction that we were gonna go with, and we could have passed it on to the boards and commissions, cause a lot of times during that time, they didn't have anything to do at the time, and so by bringing these tasks on with the parks, it helps with Mariana, and they can be able to define all these things, same thing with the park, with the library board. So I guess for the Arts Commission, should we just go with those two recommendations?
May I add something to that?
Actually, Councilor Heiser.
Oh, sorry.
Uh, I just wanted to suggest possibly full, uh, moving this commission under parks, and I haven't talked to Mariana about it, so I don't know. And I haven't talked to Mariana about it, so I don't know.
She has trails.
I understand, but it, it wouldn't change the fact that Amber still could play the same role. But because there is, in theory, a lot of collaboration that could be done with public space in the city, given what Arts and Cultural Commission wants to do by definition, it would make sense to me that there could be more cohesiveness.
So why, why don't we have the city manager weigh in right here on this?
Yeah, I, I think, well, Parks Report's up to Jerry, so my recommendation would be if, if you want to have, uh, you know, this go, more connection with the, the Parks Department, that Jerry would be the liaison for it. That we could have Jerry, uh, help, uh, work with the board to do those kinds of things. And my experience is, a board, all these boards and commissions, they've typically had, my experience, always had an ACM involved in it in some way, just providing overall direction and help. How can they, uh, bring things back? If there's questions about their direction that the council has, how can we get that back in front of the council and ask those questions to see what the council wants us to do? And I, I think that's one of the things here, is just clarity of the mission, uh, that you're asking for this, um, board, or the, I guess, the Arts and Cultural Commission, is what is it that you want them to do? And, and making sure that's clear. And then if there's questions about that, then we can bring that back to you and ask, uh, to get some more clarity. I think that's lacking in some of these.
So, sorry, I'm not going to let you off the hook quite that easy.
Okay.
That was a really good answer. However, I don't, the library board has a, a board that they, the library director has the library board. The Parks Director has the Parks Board. The Arts Board doesn't really have a home, and they don't fit. There's, you know, the library has events, but maybe they're not as, uh, connected on public spaces. Parks Department has the spaces, but maybe they're not as connected on the art. I'm not sure that either of those directors are the best liaison to that very specific board that frankly shouldn't have to be meeting as often anyway. And so I, I'm, what I'm wanting to ask you is, is there a, are you, would you be comfortable allowing for, uh, an ACM of your choice, basically saying, eliminating that it's going to be a department, a director that is going to be responsible, but rather city manager is responsible through his designations, through an ACM of his choosing, working it out? Or just having Amber be the actual representative to that board?
Well, I, I think, you know, yes, I'm comfortable with that. The, the direct answer is yes. And, uh, that's, I think that's what I was trying to communicate, is my experience, I've always had an ACM involved in all of these. So even though I may have a director that is, is assigned to it perhaps, and that's how these are set up, I'll, I want to have an ACM involved as well, because I think they need that support and that leadership as well.
So would you be okay with eliminating the, the, the department that it liaisons with?
Yes, sir. And if you want to make it city manager or city manager designate. I'm fine with that, absolutely. Because it will move around, and I think there will be different skill sets with different, different staff, and we may want to have some opportunities to change it.
Yes.
That's right. And ultimately, it's all my responsibility, so I'll have to manage all of it.
Well, and that, and that is a, maybe a good way for, you know, an ACM to rely the message on what we really are wanting to do, especially if we're gonna be handing a task. Um, so I did have a question regarding, I know cultural, cultural got added a couple of months ago, and I wanted to know exactly, because I know that they have brought some things they've been doing, and I would like to understand exactly what part of the cultural is related to art. And I was trying to, when, when I heard we're gonna change it to cultural, immediately I went to, I went back to my roots and thought about all my cultural dances, and what is traditional for, for people from my country. And that's what I would like to, that I ambitioned that the, the board was going to be providing some, some recommendations on, hey, maybe we are going to be celebrating, an example, Hispanic Heritage Month. So we have a presentation about folklorical dances from different Hispanic regions. So I don't know exactly what they are envisioning with culture. Um, so if, if that's the way that the board is going to continue, I would like to see that tied up to artistic features.
I, I, I think that, um, they would be willing to take that direction from you all. I, I think, um, just being brand new to the commission, I know that they, you know, some oratory things that they, you know, that they wanted to add, um, but we could definitely bring that to the council.
Can you give me an example?
I think they were going to have the high school students give, um, some, some speeches uh, as part of Martin Luther King, um, celebration. And I think they were, they've also done a, an Asian-American food. Um, they had a dinner, and so they celebrated, you know, the, the food. Um, and I'm sure they have other things that I, I'm just not familiar with.
So, yeah, I, what I'm saying is, the best definitions of culture, I was trying to understand what it was. It will be a customs, laws, dress, architecture styles, tradition, social traditions. So that's what I was envisioning when this got added. Now, if we are going to be talking about some sort of oratorium, I would like to see something that represents the whole cultural of the United States, if that's what we're going to be focusing on.
Sure, sure.
Councilor Florsecamp.
All right, thank you. Um, piggybacking off of, uh, Councilmember Parsley, you and I, and there was somebody else that sat in the interview, and we were trying to define cultural infrastructure, because we don't know what that means. So it sounds like at one point we thought, oh, this is a good idea. But then when we broke it down and tried to like, figure it out, I mean, luckily, the, the applicants were giving us information, because I had zero idea on what that meant. And I, I think that was something that was never discussed. And I think if we want a cultural commission, maybe that's, that, that would be, you know, I, I just don't know how they intermingle unless you're talking about art.
So, so what you're saying resonates with me. Uh, what Councilwoman Parsley is saying is resonates. What, what I've heard stated, every time the Arts, uh, and Cultural Commission, uh, comes forward is, we really created this in order to focus on bringing art pieces to the city.
Exactly.
The board that we created has four members with knowledge and passion for art and related fields, which goes to what our intention was.
Right.
And now we, by our authorization, have widened their scope to the point where there are events and a variety of things that are taking place. And so if we want to give that direction and that clarity, it might, while it may not be perfectly well-received, uh, it might eliminate a lot of the conflict and, and struggle that we are having to go back to the Arts Commission, eliminate the cultural events components, because the library board, uh, and the library does things, the Parks Board does things, the Communications Department does things, we all have, the events get scattered out, and so that we can hone in and tell the Arts, uh, and rename it back to the Arts Board, and we say, your singular focus, based on your setup, is passion for art, and we want you to be bringing forward recommendations for art installation. So like, for example, the art on the wall at City Hall, the art in the Public Safety Center, which they're working on, the potential for, uh, statues or structural pieces, uh, at the roundabout at Bunton. I think it's been m- m- mentioned, that dreaded roundabout, to put a nice art piece there. Uh, you know, maybe art features at Mary Kyle Hartson, or at various parks, or an art standard like, uh, that, in ordinance that we may say that every development has to have, or every bond has to have 1% of art. All of that, if we eliminate the cultural part and focus it on the art and give them direction, we want you focused on art and figuring out how to cultivate and promote the display of art, uh, and the ability to fund art within our city, I think that will go a long way towards eliminating the controversy.
I have a quick, just a quick feedback. So part of this came back to me as I was scrolling through the public library post on Facebook. Five days ago, they showed a dance for the American Indians. That's what I see as cultural. So if, if the library is already doing it, I would love to encourage the library to continue to do that and let that be a focus for them.
Right. Well, the, the, the big question right now is who's in charge of what cultural events? Because that's scattered all throughout.
I agree with you.
We told them that they're the Arts and Cultural Board, and so they are rightly trying to figure out how to, uh, fulfill that mission and vision, which we 7-0 authorized them. And so here we are again in a situation where we've given permission, and now maybe on hindsight, we're seeing that we shouldn't, we really shouldn't have done that, because we weren't anticipating some of the, uh, you know, out, outfall of.
I think it's because of the, that since the cultural was fallen in line with the library of what she's talking about, it fit in this narrative. And when I originally brought it back to change it from arts to culture was to where if we were able to start getting grants and funding, that we would be able to use arts and culture on that end to where we could draw in some of those dollars. Because again, this is a board that has a budget. And, and going right, if we have an ACM that overlooks this, of course, this is also be looking over the budget on that end. So yes, the public library is doing dances and things like that, and the parks is doing Easter egg events, whatever it is. I think when, when I originally came in to change it to the Arts and Culture, because it was also bringing art and the culture of not just America, but just the city as well, of the people, the diversity of the people that we have in our community. It was bringing that to this commission. And then since it already was under the library, it was just a filter all the way through. That's, that, that was the whole reason.
Why they were doing it. I'd, I'd like to make a, a motion on some of this. I think I've.
I was about to.
All right, so, because this is not an ordinance, this, nothing is being changed, this is, uh, direction to staff. So there's three things that I'm seeing, uh, that we, direct staff to bring back. One is to eliminate the council, uh, ex officio seat.
Eliminate the cultural part of the board.
Eliminate the cultural part. What was the third?
It was two seats, we were like, eliminating staff, yeah.
And the staff liaison. All right. I mean, my brain. All right, all right. So I'd like to make a motion to direct staff, to amend, to bring back an ordinance, to amend the Arts and Cultural Commission, uh, to eliminate the Cultural Commission components that were added. Um, uh, to, uh, eliminate the ex officio non-voting member, uh, and to direct, uh, to eliminate the library board's, the director, and replace, uh, the, uh, responsibility to the city manager or designate.
Second.
All right, motion by the mayor, second, about Councilmember Parsley. Is there a discussion on the motion? Councilor Zuniga.
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear, um, Arts and Cultural Commission, could we possibly rename that into Historical Commission?
The county has.
Is there already?
Yeah.
Uh, it just, it, it appears to me like, we think the word culture is offensive, and this is why we're trying to remove it.
No, not at all.
I think it's possible, well, he's not, you're not wrong in that somebody could take it that way.
Right, and I just don't want us.
But that is not, that is not at all what I think the intention here is. It's to redefine the Arts Board back to what was initially intended, to relieve the conflict and to align the various boards and commissions with what we, what, what our direction is.
Right, because we did vote 7-0, as Mr. Tobias said, in order to give them more room to apply for funding and different grants. I thought that was the whole reason we had raised our expectations of this committee. But now we want to go back to just arts.
But we can, if we were to apply for funding for cultural aspect of that, then we can definitely encourage the library to do that.
Exactly.
And then let the board, the Arts Board, be focused on what we initially wanted to was, which was to see art across the city.
I mean, to be fair, I feel like we've waited a really long time. I just want a statue somewhere.
Yes.
That's all I want. That was my goal.
Metallic piece of pie somewhere.
Yes.
Nothing, nothing happens fast in this government.
No, I get it, I get it. I'm just saying, there's been a lot of art shows, there's been a lot of, uh, cultural shows, but like, the whole point during that time, and I get it changes, I understand that. And look, we tried to do the cultural part, but I think it, it, it also kind of collides with the library's responsibility. And so, and it worked with the library, right? And so we realized, I realized it doesn't work in this instance. And I really saw it when we had that interview, and we were asking to, for help defining what their goals were, because we didn't know. And so that was the time I said, okay, maybe this isn't in the direction that we, that I want to go. And so I'm, I'm all for that.
Well, we still have, we have 65,000 potentially coming forward in the budgets, council that put that in. So I doubt the city manager's planning to eliminate it. It'll have to be us that eliminate it. I don't want to eliminate it. I want to, I want the, the newly reformed Art Board, and it, every, the, the, nothing is changing about the seats or the members or anything, but that board to come up with a plan for how they will expend that budget on art in a fiscal year. So that's the, that's, if there is direction to the board, it is that. That is as wide of a direction of a highway as you can give, while also saying specifically what we want them to, to accomplish. Is, is that. Councilor Heiser.
I would, I'd be more okay with, with this aspect of removing cultural from the name and the, uh, and the responsibility if we were to, in a second action, to immediately give that responsibility of culture, the cultural element, to the library board. But in the grand scheme of things, I think what we've discussed, uh, earlier, um, I think Councilmember Tobias, or Mayor, you said it after the sub, uh, sub, the subcommittee topic was giving them direction. And I think like, a lot of the problems and the hiccups that we've had could have been, uh, lessened had we taken that mindset with the boards and commissions much earlier. So this, while I understand how we're wordsmithing this of removing cultural from the name, it did serve a purpose that I think was good, and I don't want it to, to go away. I just feel a little bit responsible, like we could be more responsible with how, um, we are giving direction uh, in terms of what we would like to see from these, I guess, setting expectations. So I don't know how we go about that, because this is, I guess, that could be something that comes back, but.
So I'm hearing no direction to, I'm hearing direction to not change anything we're currently doing with regard to cultural events that are put on by the Parks Board and by the library board. That y'all are happy with that, they can continue to grow that, but you feel that this board is better suited to focus on public art. And just kind of have learned that through the trials of, you know, this new board being established, and we, we've all learned things. So, um, that's what I'm hearing, is that you're very happy with the cultural programs and want the staff and the board, the parks and the library boards to keep, keep up with those.
I think the library has done a phenomenal job at that. I follow their page. They're always doing something cultural, to my understanding, again, looking at all the definitions, and I would love to see them continue doing that, so.
And we had the Progress for Peace way before we had the Art Commission, so make no mistake, that is not anything new.
We're gonna, we're gonna talk about that in just a second.
I'm just saying, that was very cultural, right?
And we have other, we have other boards to talk about here before we move on, so. Are we good?
There's a motion at the table.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All, all opposed? All right, where are we at? What was that?
Five to two.
You said yes? Four to two? You were a nay?
I was a nay.
Okay, uh, motion carries four to two. All right, let's go to Economic Development. The residency and the setup of it. There we go. All right, Councilor Heiser.
Yes, uh, very simply, we should have a residency requirement. Uh, we are on pace. Uh, I think, what do we have, 60,000 people in the city or approaching, whatever he said.
So two questions, just to be clear. So number one is, is the residency requirement the only requirement? Or are you wanting to say that leave the spec, uh, specifics of what, like, the representation across key sectors in there, but they just must be residents? Or are you wanting to say only being a resident matters?
Okay. Uh, I would, I, I would like a residency requirement for what I'm thinking, and this can be part of the direction, five of the two, or five of the seven seats, and then the two can be from the, the key stakeholders that could offer insight, uh, that could further progress that the Economic Development Board could make.
So you're saying five residents?
And two.
Two stakeholders?
Yes.
And the, the residents don't have to be associated with any trades or?
No.
Just residents?
Correct. And additionally, and I don't know where we stand, uh, on the, the idea of a subcommittee. I don't think everyone's going to be in favor of doing that carte blanche across the board. So I would like to propose, and when I, after everyone else talks, I'd like to, well, I would like to have a council appointee to Economic Development. So if, if, uh...
So does anybody have any comments with regards to the recommendation to make five members residents and two members stakeholders?
And you mentioned, I do have a question. So the residents, they will have requirements, right? Like some sort of economic development background or having any businesses in the city?
No, that's, he's suggesting the opposite.
We can add that. That's definitely a good discussion to have.
Those are things that I, I feel like are brought up in an interview process.
Okay, but some, some of us might want to codify that. Like, I think that's a good idea. I want somebody on, they don't all have to be on there, but I think it's a good idea to have some people on there that have that experience.
I would like to see maybe two residents be a small business owner, another two residents be a medium business owner. I mean, somebody that has an interest in, an interest in seeing the cities succeed economically? Sorry. Something along those lines is what I was thinking. It would matter.
I, I don't want to discourage anybody who has an interest in serving from possibly not submitting an application. We have the ability, as the liaison to the interview process, to decide which of the total of the whole applicants we feel like would be best suited to be on this board, based on a number of factors. Codifying that now, I mean, why not do that for running for council?
We do, 100%. It's called single-member districts.
In terms of experience?
Well, because we're judged by the voters.
Well, I understand. So I'm just saying, if we want to create a barrier, lower a barrier entry, given that people, people serving, there's not people lining up at the door to serve, and that if we want to give people experience-
Well, we just had 24 people apply for, and so that was, and, and what was the statement? Of the seven, that represented six individual neighborhoods. So we distinguish, you know, and so making distinguishments on our boards as to what the makeup should be has, has merit and precedent across the, like, various boards, like the Ethics Commission's board, we all get to have a say, a different kind of say, you know, there. So, but the residency requirement, I think you're going to get support on. So I think the compromise that's being, that I'm hearing is to say that we're still going to make sure that certain sectors are being represented on the Economic Development Board, which I, I think frankly, solves both problems pretty well. The, the problem of not wanting folks who don't live here to have, to be on that board, but also allowing for different sectors of our economy, as opposed to necessarily sectors of the city, but sectors of the economy, small business, medium business, large business, I thought was great, I don't know how you define that exactly, is a pretty good compromise. Does anybody else have thoughts on that?
The, on the Arts Commission, if you go back to that, I think it's people who express a passion for arts, so maybe it's something a little more general that just says, you know, a passion for local business, or, you know, with knowledge about infrastructure, you know, something about the, you know, business community, but it wouldn't necessarily rule anybody out.
Well, no, that, I mean, it, it, I think it, I think it needs to. It needs to say like, no, so, this, this member is a resident, and this member has a specific interest in small business. They give the voice of the small business community when they're looking at this item. This, this is a member of the large business community, and they have, they give that voice of how this economic development proposal will impact that industry. And so, we have to define it in the, in that way, but not all of them. It's a, it's a group, so just like here, two members as citizen community representatives. So some, some combination thereof makes, makes a lot of sense to me, and is much more something I can support than just anybody in the city without regard to having a diverse board with diverse interests, is, is just a much better setup for economic development.
And, sorry to interrupt, I just want to make sure that we're also addressing the tourism component, in, in addition to the economic development.
That's-
Somebody who represented that tourism interest should probably also be represented on the board.
So mayor, how many motions can I make here consecutively?
One.
As many as you want until someone calls a point of order.
Okay.
The one.
All right, so which one do I want to do first here?
Actually, you can make one, we will take a vote.
Yeah.
And then I will see who wants to have the floor, and we'll give the floor to someone else.
Sure, that's what I was asking. So I would like to make a motion to direct staff to come back to us with a residency requirement for five of the seven members to be from the city of Kyle. Two of those seven members can, can be key local stakeholders, including major employer, utility, healthcare, higher education, and tourism, and also two of the seven, of the, two of the four that would have to be from Kyle, or two of the five that would have to be from Kyle, fit a small business, medium business, and large business criteria, which I will leave to staff to define when it comes back to us.
So just to make sure I'm understanding, five will be required to be from Kyle, two to be some major stakeholders, two to be small or medium business owners.
Three.
Three.
Yeah, three.
Second.
All right, the motion is to make a residency requirement for five members of the board, three of them being small and medium business?
That's uneven.
Yeah, well, we, we don't necessarily know what that means, and also, what does that mean? Like, you work there, or you're an owner? You know, so-
I don't want to have that at all, so I'm just-
Yeah, well, all right, so, hang on, there's a motion in a second. The, the one clarification, when you say two stakeholders, you're talking about two resident stakeholders? Or the two members that are not, that do not have a residency requirement will be stakeholders?
What she said.
No, not wish, I need, I need clarification.
Okay.
Yeah, it's-
So that's seven, we're taking out two to be the, the key stakeholders. Okay, so the, the Dr. Wright or-
We don't have to have those either.
No.
No, I understand, but he, but by definition fits what's already on the description here in the presentation. Key local stakeholders. Being the head of the school board, that would be a local stakeholder, right?
Maybe that's something, we thought we'd define that later.
That's an example, so you're, you're gonna have-
In the motion, I just read from what's already the guideline for economic development. So put those two aside here, okay?
Right.
And then we have five people who all have to fit a residency requirement.
All right, but hang on. Stakeholder is the general term. It is defined in the ordinance as one major employer, one representative of the utility sector, one member of the healthcare sector, one member of higher education, and one member of tourism. Those are five different representatives, and they can't co-mingle. It's not pick and choose, it's that, those are the five stakeholders. So you're saying two stakeholders, but of these five, which two?
I'm, I'm unclear, just like we need to have a requirement for small, medium, and large businesses, why we would have to pigeonhole these two people into being from an arbitrary list of descriptors here, when we can get applications and we can decide of the key local stakeholders, the major employer, et cetera, which of the two are most qualified and best suited to represent this board? I feel like we're, we're adding in hurdles right now for us during the interview process that we don't need to define.
I think we need to define. I, I'm okay with defining them and having, even us defining what small business is and what big business is, and I think we have the capability as a council to figure that out. I feel like small businesses would be five and less, and you're registered with the Texas Comp Patrol, or Texas, or, you know, SOS, there's things that we can do to define that. And I, I think it's being made more difficult than what it is. I've written numbers down three different times, and it's not getting any easier. So I don't, I don't want to limit, but I also want to have a really strong board, because I feel like it's been pretty laid back for a long time, and the one thing that we really need to focus on in the city of Kyle is our economic development, because I think we've grown to the point where we can be a little bit pickier. And I do want to get that input from the residents. It would be great if we could get that input from the residents that has knowledge in those fields.
All right, so there, there's a motion on the table. I, I don't believe that it's sufficiently clear, frankly, but we'll, we'll, do we have any further discussion on it?
Can we pick two of the five stakeholders?
Sure.
We don't need five. Can we have two?
Mayor, can I amend the motion?
I think-
Or would you want me to start over? Apologies.
Yes, but that, we can, you can rescind with agreement from the second, so that we can just start back from scratch. But I, we need to be clear, there's seven positions, go one through seven, exactly what those seven positions are, so that we know what you're proposing clearly.
Thank you.
So hang on, are you resc, you'd like to rescind your motion?
Yes.
Is that agreeable? All right, motion's rescinded. Go ahead, councilman.
Okay, take two. I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to come back to council with new guidelines for Economic Development and Tourism Board to introduce a residency requirement for five of the seven members. Two of the seven members would be key local stakeholders, one being a major employer, and the other being from healthcare. Good so far?
Two of the seven creates conflict. So you, there's a group of five that are residents, and then there's two.
Yes.
And then you just said two of the seven can be-
The, the two that are the key local stakeholders.
Are the non-residents.
Are the, yes, from major-
So five residents with no-
Correct.
With no qualifications, and then the two non-residents are-
I'm gonna get there, I was just trying to break them down, just for myself and you guys.
I would prefer you to go one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, what they can be.
Thank you. Number one, major employer. Number two, from the-
Major employer, resident or non-resident?
It doesn't-
No, no need.
No need. It doesn't matter.
Could be a resident, doesn't have to be a resident.
But five of them have to be residents.
It, it, it needs, it needs to be defined, because you're going to have situations where they don't know which category that they fall into. It's like this, when this position is open, it needs to be the major employer position, or it needs to be the non-resident stakeholder position, or, or it needs to be the resident position, just like what's in the economic, the arts and cultural.
Okay, let's go non-resident.
All right, major-
Major employer, non-resident, healthcare, non-resident. And then of the, of the five remaining, one that fits small business criteria, two medium-sized business criteria, and three would be, you know, the enterprise category.
We still have two left.
That can be at large.
Second. All right, the motion is made by councilman Heiser. We amend the Economic Development and Tourism Board to allow for one non-resident major employer, one non-resident health, employee, or representative of the healthcare industry, one resident who represents the small business community, one resident who represents the medium business community, one resident who represents the enterprise or, or large business, right? That's the same thing. And then the following two can just be residents in general. Is there discussion on that motion? I think that's perfect. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero.
Nay.
Six to one.
Oh, it's like, God, is that you? It just came out of nowhere.
That was a face-up one.
All right, do you, do you want to make more motions on this one?
I, I don't want to suck up all of the oxygen on this, so I, I will.
So are we allowing the current members to complete their terms?
Would, would that interfere with, because we, we have them defined now. Would that interfere with how they're defined? Like, for example, if they represent, I, I don't know what they represent now, but if they're not resident and they don't fit that category, they can't, like, I don't think we can let them stay there, right? They have to fulfill the category. Maybe that, that would be the, the medium, like, as long as they fit that category, we can let them finish their terms.
Well, if they fit that category, then they, then, then they're in.
Yeah, but if they don't, for some reason, if whatever's still left doesn't fit-
Yeah, we have a seven-member board.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
We've had a couple resignations, we still have five members. Two of them, the, one of the major employers, I don't know which one that would be, would be allowed to, Eddie would be allowed to stay, and the healthcare, the Seaton, the Seaton rep would be allowed to stay. There are three, ACC would have to go.
Dr. Wright, he's ex officio.
PEC.
PEC would have to go.
And then our tourism, which is our regional airport.
The San Marcos Regional Airport would have to go, so they-
So what would stay?
What we could do is we could transition them to, they could, they could hold their seats until new seats are posted and filled, and then they could be transitioned to ex officio members, non-voting members, if they chose, until their current term would expire, in which case, I doubt they're going to want to do that, but that could be something that we could offer.
So can I ask who's staying, please?
Seaton representative and the Eddie Brown.
Eddie Brown. Who, who, who owns the-
APS.
What's the name of it?
APS.
Yeah, it's Athletic Performance, they're a major shoe manufacturer and distributor here in Kyle.
So we're only looking at two seats, long-term, that would stay?
Of the current board.
Of the current board.
It would be those two.
Okay.
Long-term.
And the other ones would be until we find replacements?
All the rest would be five residents, three of them representing small, medium, and large, and then two at large, which we could go ahead and post for, for those.
But did I hear you say you wanted to keep them until we found their replacements?
That, that everybody would stay, so first we have to amend the ordinance, so it's going to be a months-long process, and we have to post, advertise, get it before the council, and have it confirmed, and then, then they're in. We should definitely let everyone stay if they so choose to stay until that time, and then what I would recommend is that we allow any of those members to stay on as ex officio or non-voting members, and then frankly, if those, those stakeholders wanted to stay on long-term, non-voting, then I don't see any reason why we wouldn't want to have their voice in the room. So they've been a part of it for a long time, just as non-voting. Because we've had the chamber, we've had various different people on that-
Greater San Marcos Partnership.
Greater San Marcos Partnership, and those kind of voices are really, they've got experience, and that's the whole balance of experience and non-experience on an Economic Development Board when it comes to these projects, so, but that's, yeah, actually. Do you all have interest in allowing for those, there's, there's five stakeholders, we're allowing the major employer and the healthcare to stay on officially, but allow the representatives from the utility, higher education, tourism to remain on once replaced as ex officio members, and then they could even be reappointed as ex officio non-voting members.
I think if they're non-voting, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, so the recommendation would come from the board that we've just, the dynamic that we just, just created, but they would be there to give counsel, but their, their votes would not come to us, period, if they wanted to.
Mm-hmm.
All right, I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to proceed with the replacement of the board in, as it relates to the discussion that we just had, and to also bring back in the ordinance that the, all five stakeholder categories, the three that we just eliminated, can be placed on as ex officio members.
Second.
Motion by the mayor, seconded by councilmember Forrest Kales. Is there discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? All right, motion carries seven to zero. Does anybody have any other boards or commissions that they want to talk about?
I just want to do one more motion on economic development. I'd like to make a motion for, to add a council member to a non-voting role on the Economic Development and Tourism Board.
All right, motions to add a council member as an ex officio member to the Economic Development Board, is there a second?
Second.
Second by councilmember Parsley. Any discussion on that motion? I don't know if that's actually good or bad, so, councilmember Forrest Kales.
We literally just had a whole conversation on how it was not a good idea to do this, so there's no way I'm going to vote for one to have it and then none of the others. It's an, it's not a good idea, we need to keep our hands clean, they'll come to us eventually anyways, and so there's-
I agree. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
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 All right, motion fails, six to one.
That's a brutal second.
Well, I mean, that opens a discussion. That opens, that opens a discussion.
I was like, I like you enough, I'm going to throw you out of the board.
All right, last item, oh, I, actually, do, do we have any more boards and commissions that we wish to discuss?
Sorry, one more, and this one is maybe the most important.
I was like, I like you enough, I'm gonna throw you out of the way.
All right, last item, oh, actually, do we have any more boards and commissions that we wish to discuss?
Sorry, one more in this one.
Is maybe the most important to me, is, I just wanna get clarification on Kayak, because I know that we're approaching the submission deadline, and I believe that we need eighteen. Sixteen members, and we only have thirteen applicants. So I just, whatever we need to do in order to change the required, so Kayak can function with only thirteen, because if we don't hit the sixteen, I don't want it to go away.
Well, would it?
I-
Like, you can't form and start with just thirteen?
I, I'm sure you could. I, I don't, they don't have to comply with Open Meetings Act, they're, they're-
Well, even if they do, that's, they've got more, thirteen would be enough for a forum.
Yeah, yeah.
So you just wanna be clear, fill those seats?
I just wanted, I just wanna make sure, because now, this is the time we're talking about it, and I don't want Kayak to die, you know?
It won't.
Okay.
I have one more thing to address about this item in general, and is, I would like to see if we are, I would like for Brian to kind of take a look at all the boards we have, and if there is any adjustments that you feel like could be done, or make the boards a little bit more compact, or maybe mix one with the other, so we don't have like twenty-five hundred boards. I, I would appreciate any recommendations that you may have for us to make this process even better.
Okay.
I don't know if that's a motion that I need to do, but I, if you have anything that you can bring back to us as a recommendation.
Yeah, I, I can certainly look at that going forward, and I think some of these are statutory, that you have to require, you're required to have them, so I think we need to put them in some buckets of things that you're required to do, some things that you've, the voters have asked you to do via charter, and then others, and the, the remaining list is fairly small, so I, I can look at those with the team and, and bring you back some recommendations. I do think some of the clarity that's been added tonight has been helpful, in particular for the artsing, or the arts board now, that we've called it, I think that helps, and we'll continue to look at that.
Thank you.
Okay, I actually have one, and it's a simple, can we go to the Ethics Commission? Can you go to the, that one? All right, so three-year terms to run concurrently with corresponding council members cannot serve for more than two three-year terms. I think that, you know, this certainly is something maybe that doesn't apply to anyone ever, but it might apply to me, but I would, regardless, it could apply to any of us if we continue to serve for a period of time. The Ethics Commission appointee is someone who is very much appointed by a council member, and I don't understand why someone who's been your ethics nominee, if you go into a third term, must term out and you must appoint a new one. So because it's such a specific to each individual council member, I wanted to recommend that we allow for the terms to coincide with the council member's terms, and you can have an ethics appointee as long as you're on serving, because it says it runs concurrently with your council member's terms. So why we have to eliminate if someone wins a third term is my question and recommendation. Councilmember Floris Kael.
I'd like to make a motion to remove the verbiage, cannot serve for more than two three-year terms from the Ethics Commission.
Motion by Councilmember Floris Kael, seconded by Councilmember Parsley, is there discussion on that motion? Was that clear enough? Will that get it back? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Are we done? I thought that was pretty good. All right, next up, agenda item number eleven, receive a report, hold discussion, provide staff direction regarding selection of moderators and panelists for the Dialogues for Peace and Progress event series. Ms. Sonier.
Hello, council, Rachel Sonier, Director of Communications, for the record. I'm gonna be presenting our proposed panelists and moderator selection criteria for the Dialogue for Peace and Progress, and then, of course, open to feedback. So just for a little bit of background, the Dialogue for Peace and Progress event series began in June of 2020. It was in the midst, oop, in the midst of nationwide protests after the George Floyd killings, and it was started by former council member Dex Ellison to join community members and leaders for open and honest conversations, and to raise awareness, and if necessary, facilitate change in the city of Kyle. The Dialogues take place now three times a year to commemorate Black History Month, Juneteenth, and Hispanic Heritage Month in September. Currently, we have no specified criteria for moderators or panelists for this event series. Moderators have independently volunteered or have been asked in the past to be the moderator, and then they've selected panelists at their own discretion. All of the prior moderators have been council members or board members appointed by council. From 2020 to 2022, we had a council member Ellison hosting all of them, and then in September of 2022, council members Flores Kael and Parsley both hosted the Hispanic Heritage one, and then ever since then, Arts and Cultural Commission Chair Vanessa Westbrook has hosted the Black History Month one and the Juneteenth Dialogue one in 2023. The reason we're bringing this before you is there's recently some issues identified about whether participants running for office should be able to participate in the event, and whether the city has any kind of policy for this event series, which we don't really, so that's why we're bringing this before you tonight. These are our proposed moderator selection criteria. Moderators will be elected city officials or appointed city board member, commission or committee members, and will be selected by council prior to each Dialogue for Peace and Progress. The selected moderator will be responsible for choosing the panelists from the pool of applicants we get, outlining the discussion topics and questions for the panelists, and then, of course, moderating the panel. Our proposed criteria for panelists, our minors may participate as panelists as long as their parent slash guardian fills out a consent form. Applicants must not be running for office within city of Kyle or Hayes County, or for any office that represents Hayes County or Kyle. Applicants must either reside, work, or volunteer in the city of Kyle. And then, just for a little background, for city staff's proposed rule is the City Communications Department will place moderator selection for the Dialogue on the Agenda for Council in a timely manner, so for the one coming up in September, we would put it on the August early council agenda for selection. And then we will also facilitate the application process for all of our applicants, manage event operations, such as the ordering of any items, setting up and running the live stream, and of course, managing promotion for the event. So before you today, you can either make no changes, and we won't create a policy for the Peace and Progress Dialogue Series, or you can adopt the proposed policies, a policy for the selection process in a resolution, that will come back at the first council meeting in August, or you can make some proposed changes to our proposed criteria, and we'll bring that before you in a resolution in the first meeting in August, or obviously, anything else council has feedback on.
All right, any feedback, Councilmember Parsley?
I may have more as the discussion arises, but I thoroughly enjoy doing that, the Hispanic Heritage Month last, last year with council member Flores Kael. I already have a ton of ideas that I'm trying to put together for this year. Again, it's, there is no direction, there is nothing set in stone, so I'm happy to listen to options, however, I do think that, that this should be something that council does. We are gonna be moving constantly, you know? You may get reelected, you may not get reelected, and that can be moved to the next council member who wants to take on to this. And there is seven people sitting here, maybe we can split them into, you know, each one of us takes a different dialogue. I also may make a suggestion, you know, as you were talking on the history, this, this started during 2020, after George Floyd's death. Can we bring something additional, have maybe four Dialogues for Peace and Progress, and include something more about the American history too, since we have Hispanic Heritage Month, and we have Juneteenth and Black History Month? Is there anything else that we can be adding to these Dialogues? That would, that would be a suggestion for me. I would like to hear a little bit more, have it every quarter. I, I don't know, it's just a thought.
Councilmember Floris Kael, I think you had your hand up first, you wanna go? All right, Councilmember Heiser.
Yeah, what, it seems, and correct me if I'm wrong, if, if we were to institute these changes, that you and council member Parsley would not be allowed to moderate this event, because you are, if you, you are running for office-
Well, it's contradictory, because it says if you're elected, you can, but if you're running, you can't.
You cannot be a panelist.
The panelists are the ones that we have that are running for office, the moderators, this is, if you look on the screen, we have-
It's the people who are sitting here, that we are interviewing.
Okay, but to be fair, if, it is so contradictory, because I'm, as an elected and you're running, you can, but you can't. So maybe if you just wanna say, I mean, I don't know how you would put that, because-
But is that, is that fair?
Yeah, no, I, I totally agree. I'm just saying, I'm saying we wanna specify for-
But in the, in the specific example coming up, is it, is it fair for a candidate for mayor to participate as a moderator when the, when someone else cannot participate?
No, you're right. But so what I'm saying is, we need, because I, I don't wanna be on the panel, I wanna be a moderator.
Same thing.
Oh, is it the same thing?
No, I'm, I'm asking the question, because in, in my opinion, keeping the, the moderator or panelist, the participants, if you are a candidate for a seat in the year that you are a candidate, is it fair for you to be able to be a part of that event when another candidate may not?
So my answer to that would be, I've already done it, right? And so I don't, we're still seated, we're still elected, and we're still here, so is it fair that you exclude me as a council member, because I would be running in an election?
Shouldn't I be then given the opportunity to participate as well, is what I'm asking?
Sure, oh, absolutely, we all should. We can all three do it.
Councilmember Heiser.
Just for the record, this had nothing to do with you, because I had people reach out to me about something that happened recently, and so the point being is like, and I know council member Tobias, I think technically you were a panelist for Juneteenth, and you and I both spoke at the Martin Luther King Jr. Day event here, so I think this disqualifies us, if we were to be running as elected officials, would disqualify us from doing that as well. So whether it's a moderator or a panelist, I kinda feel like we're completely contradicting ourselves, and if, if it, to my knowledge, no, no person running for office has participated and abused the position that they were, that we-
I've received complaints on virtually every elected official abusing the privilege at the time, someone who is either elected or a candidate running for office. As a panelist and as moderators, I've received complaints.
So, okay, I have not, I've just had, heard issues of people-
Did you not get the emails?
I did get the email.
We got emails with complaints.
No, I'm saying that I didn't see anything in the participation of the person running for office, that they did anything, that they said, hi, I'm so-and-so, and I'm running for such-and-so.
That's happened twice.
Okay, I just, that was not something I saw, or was brought to my attention, so, you know?
Mayor Proton.
It's gotta be one way or the other.
Yes, because just recently, we just passed something for Team Academy or Team Kyle that, you know, yes, if you're running for office, you can join this group, okay? And so, and I'm gonna bring up the little controversy, last year during the Founder's Day Parade, we had a council member that was on the, as the, in the parade itself, there was a little controversy there. So are we comparing that, comparing to this? So we just make it across to where if you're running for an office, that it'd be best to be safe, to say, I'm going to not be taking part of any kind of platform of, of the city, and pass it on to another council member? Should we be able to do that? Because again, we just got finished doing the same thing with Team Academy. You know, we're telling people that, you know, yes, you can be part of this, you can run for an office, you can be part of this group, but if we're over here doing it over here, we're saying, no, I don't know if we should or not. We are, yes, we are elected officials, but I think it's just a matter of seeing, you know, what would be best if we just take ourself out of that Dialogue, and just go back to what the original mission was, to have conversations. Go back to what this was really all about, whether it was me, or whether it was Daniela, or whether Bear and I spoke at the MLK with all the high school students, going back to what the original founding thing that Councilman Ellison brought forth was to have conversations, you know? Whether it's the moderators or whoever it is, yes, there was some controversy on this last one, there was somebody that's running for elected office that was on the, was a panelist, I got those emails as well. So I wonder if it's like a matter, are we just going to wanna just keep that political agenda aside, or are we gonna go with somebody that's really gonna give some input on that end? So we gotta really look at it from that point of what the whole mission is, and who should we select, or the city select, as moderators, and then also with the questions and so forth.
Yeah.
That's the way I look at it.
Very good questions. We just need to, we need to pick something we can all agree with as it relates to this event, and stick with it. And so that, the, the, the problem is, is putting staff and other members of the community in a bind, because they don't know how to handle it, because we're just not being clear on what is and is not allowed.
Can I say something too?
Well, actually, Councilmember Floris Kael, yeah. And then your next.
So, I mean, that's worrisome to me, because I also, last year, during the Veterans Parade, also moderated as, as, as that too, but to go back to what council member Tobias is saying, this is just about a discussion, right? I think that's important, but it's also not outside the scope of my duty. Like, I'm elected, I am a council member, and I, I've already done these things, and so even though I can understand some people will try to push a political agenda, I don't think it was done in the, at the last one either. I mean, in retrospect, it wasn't. It was not like, maybe we keep the titles out, maybe we don't say, this is, you know, running for mayor, or running for sheriff, you know, you just say, this is who they are, right?
We, we didn't advertise anything like that.
Right, that's what I'm saying, then maybe we, as council, need to say, okay, we need to make this policy, and then the residents can be clear, because in retrospect, I don't think it was a bad thing, because he didn't, we didn't say who he was, and we didn't propagate for him, we didn't say, hey, you know, he's running for sheriff. Instead, he was just a person, right? And so I don't think there's really any harm in that.
So you're, you're saying you're, you're fine with whoever, anyone and everyone?
Yes, as long as you don't promote yourself in that way, you know what I mean? That, that's where I think it could be an issue, but for people who are already here, people who already, like me, I feel like I have a duty, I, I loved it, I enjoyed it last year, I've always been involved, I think it's more of a punishment, because I've decided to rerun again, that, and I shouldn't be excluded, and you know, to be fair, other people shouldn't be excluded either, it, it's, it's just a hard pill to swallow, and, and I think residents are upset or confused, because we haven't made a statement on it one way or another, but when we do, then we set the expectation, and then they can just, I mean, eventually, they can just be mad and then accept it.
Councilmember Zucca.
Yes, so it is very difficult to kind of see what position to be in. I feel bad about this, because I actually participated in Citizens Police Academy while I was running for office. So for me to now sit up here and say to a panelist or a moderator, you're running for office, you shouldn't do it, it's really difficult, but I would love to see all our politics taken out of the dais. Obviously, that's not gonna happen, but I, I agree with, kind of with what the mayor's saying, it should not just be, if it's gonna be on the panelists, it also should be on moderators, and, and we also have to remember that, when we're out at, at events during campaign, campaign season, that is sort of a visible, very visible on us, when we're, it can look like we're choosing sides.
Well-
And we're supposed to be very nonpartisan.
So, so think about it this way, let's run a scenario here, with the filing for, we have three seats that are open, District Two, District Four, and Mayor. The filing period hasn't even started, so we don't know who all the candidates are, but if we allowed for ourselves, any of us, to be on the board, wouldn't we also have to allow for anyone else who's running to be a panelist? And then if we do that, if we say, all right, we're gonna open it all the way up, we'll kinda pressure, does that put on staff, when various people, they're running for Districts Two, Districts Four, and Mayor, are wanting to be on that panelist, what, what, how would staff handle such a, a situation? They would feel obliged to say yes to everyone, and all candidates running for city council, candidates running for county commissioner, candidates running for sheriff, and various others would want to apply to be on the panelist in order to participate and have that platform to speak. So that's the- to speak. So that's the other side of it. In this particular event has been the one that has created, because it's really more of a community discussion event and keeping that, the idea of keeping, uh, folks that are running for office from participating allows for that separation. I do think that it would be okay personally if you are not running for office but are on the City Council to participate. And that's just a rule. If you want to participate, you can. And it doesn't, it's not a staff, staff doesn't bring it forward. Just maybe make it a rule. But if you're running for office in any capacity, whether you're up here or whether you're down there, running to get up here, um, that during the year that you're running, you wouldn't participate that way so that we could keep candidates for office from that discussion, which creates that dynamic. It's just a, it's just a thought. It's a, I agree. It's a hard discussion, one way or the other. And I'm not, I'm not really angling for any outcome here. I'm just trying to think it through. Councilor Parsley.
Thank you. Okay, I'm just gonna give my suggestions sense again. I was a, a moderator next, last year with Councilmember Flores Kail. Um, and I wasn't running for office last year or this year, but I will probably, I don't know, next year. Um, there is a difference between being a moderator and being a panelist. We are basically opening questions for everybody who sits in here as a panelist to share experiences or share their ideas or share their background. So when we seat as a moderator, we're basically going through questions we have already lined out on what we're going to be talking. There is, last year, there was no discussion between any of us about any political things. Last year, I did get a complaint because another person running for County Commissioner was sitting in here. And you guys may not have got it, but I did get it. And, and it was my fault for not addressing that right away. And maybe we could have avoided the headache that we had this year. So my suggestion would be, um, to allow for a moderator, if it's a council member or a mayor who may be running for reelection, to be allowed to be a moderator with, you know, a disclosure that you cannot, there is no going to be any political, city political talk or mention as a moderator during the event. And having absolutely nobody running for any sort of office as a panelist in any of the events.
That almost always would be okay, except this year, when two people up here are running against each other and one person is being told they can be on the, the moderator and one person is being told they cannot participate in the event. That's the only problem.
Why did we bring you both to be moderators?
Yeah, I'll bring you to be moderators.
We can't govern based on this one instance. We're governing for the future.
I agree with you. I'm, I'm only bringing it up because we need to set a policy that considers those facts. This won't be the only time this ever happens either. So.
Look, if, I would like to make no changes to this. And if, and we just need to do a better job of making sure and making it very clear that if you, if you violate, if, if you campaign for yourself, that you are banned from participating in future events. But to say that we can't participate in our, in our own events, that I know that you and you both really love to participate in, and I can't see, I, I, I think we'd be doing a disservice to the community for Councilmember Tobias, if he's in an election year, who's lived here his whole life, not to be able to participate. Because if, if you were to allow there to be a monitor, a moderator, if Councilmember Tobias speaks for 10 minutes, he's a panelist at one of these events. And so he's not allowed to do that. I just think that we're, like, I get it. And I, I am not in favor of anyone abusing the, the, the position. And Miguel, you feeling guilty, should not feel guilty. You were trying to learn about something so you could be a better public servant.
That is true.
So that is completely different than what we're discussing here. But.
But I can give examples of candidates running for, uh, council abusing the Citizens Police Academy. And it was not Miguel or you, but I can give examples of that happening. So we have to detach ourselves from our personal experiences and try to set a policy.
No, I know. That's, I'm very clearly saying, I believe this is different. I, and I'm not, I'm 100% against people stumping for themselves as candidates. But if we're going to talk about making this choice, this change, Danielle, it has to be all or nothing. Like, it can't be one or the other. Because every one of us will be affected. I know we're just discussing peace and progress right now, but moving down the line, it's just going to be the next event that we're not going to be able to participate in.
How are we going to be controlling? And, and I'm so sorry to interrupt, but we have had two years, two consecutive years, having people running for office from a specific party. So if that's going to be the case, then we're going to have to have half and half.
But now, now it's being made political.
It is, it was political. It shouldn't have been, never been political. That's why I'm saying we shouldn't have anybody running for office, sitting as a panelist on any of these dialogues. Period.
So then it can't be a moderator also.
Otherwise, the city looks like it's taking a side. And, and that's just not a good look.
So hang on, hang on. If we make the, if we make the recommendation that running for office precludes you from, if you're currently running for office, it precludes you from participating in the event, this September would be the one year that Councilmember Flores Kail, in order to respect the policy, would not be a moderator. And Councilmember Zuniga or Councilmember Tobias could participate with Councilmember Parsley as the moderators without any challenge. And the following year, Councilmember Flores Kail could participate as well, whether she's a mayor or not, does not matter. The moderators can be, because you have a passion for it. But at, that is what, that is the policy that would allow for us to eliminate the appearance and the complaints, which we have gotten consecutively every single year on, on candidates running for office. So it is either, and I agree with Councilor Heiser, it should be an all or none. But it doesn't have to preclude council members from participating, just those who are running for office, which is only once every three years. It's, that's just, that's the only way to solve it.
Every year. There's a, there's a, a council member up every year. And then, I'm going to just disagree. I don't think, I don't think I should be punished because I want to run for a different position and a motion could be made. And I, look, I'm for, you know what? Everybody should be able to do it. I am. And that's because, that's, it's fair, right? It's all or nothing. And I want to be involved. I don't want to have to give up everything that I've been involved in for the next four or five months because I've decided to run for a different position within this dais.
It's not a different position. It's just that you're running for office.
Yeah, that I'm running for, there you go.
There, there, weirdness is here, but that's, that's not what this is about. So we're getting complaints, not, it's not you, I, I actually, I, I've received a complaint, but not in terms of you stumping on you. But I've received a complaint about every other member to Councilmember Parsley's point, the, the perception of party affiliation or it doesn't, you don't have to go up and say, hey, I'm running for office in order to stump. You stump with what you say. You're constantly, you're, you're known, you're out campaigning. You come in, it's, and it creates, whether your heart is in that or not, I actually don't think that anyone's heart that has been a panelist or a part of this has been bad. And, and, and anyone on this dais or running for any office has had a bad heart. But it has created, uh, complaints of favoritism towards elected, uh, folks who are running for office and then those who wanted to participate but were then told no.
Absolution.
We just have to decide. What's that?
Absolution.
Okay.
We allowed nonpartisan candidates to be panelists or moderators.
But all council members are nonpartisan. You're not allowed to register for a party.
That's not true. That's not true.
No, no. Regardless of what party you're affiliated with, it's a nonpartisan position. You have no R and D next to your name, not a declared party.
Right.
I'd, I'd like to make it just that, looking at this and, and I'm okay with what you've got here, uh, especially with the applicants itself. But it's kind of very disappointing or just kind of hurts, hurts me a little bit to hear all of us talk about why I, as a council member, can't do this and this and the other. It's for them. Okay? It's for them. The residents, the citizens, the conversations, the issues that's going on in our city. And it seems like we're just nagging each other about who gets to be the moderator or who's going to be the panelist. And it's just going back and forth, back and forth. And, you know, if I was sitting out there, I'd be like, heck, I don't even want to be on that. Because I'm going to have to be dealing with all of this. And so that just kind of just disappoints me, just hearing that. Because what Councilman Ellison did was remarkable. And what he was bringing forth was having conversations about issues that's going on in our community that was negative but also positive. And it just seems like what we're doing here is going back and forth, back and forth of, well, I'm running for office this and I'm running for office that. I should be able to do this. I should be able to do that. We're putting ourselves on a platform already that we're higher than everything else. That I should, because I'm on council, I deserve to be on this. I deserve to be on that. Um, so, you know, yes, I was part of the original and, and Yvonne Flores Kail, thank you for stepping in for me last year for the Veterans Day, doing the moderating with, uh, Fox News and all that. I, I know I was part of that as well because that was something that we brought forth. But if the city felt that, you know, hey, we're going to go a different direction, I'm okay with it. If they wanted to choose somebody different.
Okay. But so Mayor Protam, respectfully, are you, you're saying that you're supportive of, uh, eliminating candidates running for office from the participation because it's for the people and that's the best way to be respectful to?
The applicants running for, for office, um, because it, it could look as a way of using a platform if we were to have somebody as a panelist.
Well, I think that's what we're, we're trying to, we're trying to figure out how best to handle it. I don't think, I, I do not think anyone is, is trying to discuss it from a selfish perspective. We're using our own experiences.
Yes, we are.
As examples. But, but we've received a complaint since Councilmember Ellison. I was also a panelist in 2020 during that time. And it was a profound experience for me. I think this, this is an incredible event and I wish more people paid attention. But we, we, this, because we are receiving complaints and putting staff in a bind, we have to talk this through and create a policy that eliminates.
It's true. Because the overall concept is, and I go to these things and I've been to these things. And I know Stephanie Murray was saying that she would love, she would have loved to see more elected, us elected officials in the crowd. Because that's what we want to do is we want to fill these seats in these peace and progress moments. Instead of people online, I would rather see a, a standing room only. And that should be the overall goal, whether who's moderating or not. But unfortunately, in today's time, with today's political agendas that go around, whether you're red, blue, or whatever it is, people do start looking at candidates or people that are there saying, he's pushing that agenda, he's putting, seeing that agenda. And when we're talking about social and civil or just conversations, and it's disheartening that we have to live in that right now. But that's just the way it is.
Councilor Heiser.
Yeah. Uh, Councilmember Tobias, like, I don't want to be having this conversation either, but we're only having it because residents complained. And that speaks to the political culture that we live in. And now this conversation is a reaction to that. I don't think any of us want to have it. I don't think it's an indictment of anyone's actions that is sitting up here on the council right now. But what we need to decide is, do we want, are we going to make this a hard and fast rule and say, you cannot be running for office, whether you're on council or not, you cannot be a moderator or a panelist? Or are we going to say, residents, we hear you, but get over it? Like, that's going to be the outcome here of what this vote is. And look, I think that we, you know what? I'm gonna, I'd like to make a motion, Mayor.
Okay.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, to institute a, uh, a rule to say that if you're running for public office partisan or nonpartisan, uh, council member or non-council member, that you cannot participate, uh, as a panelist or moderator in any city-sponsored events.
Whoa. As a moderator in the Dialogues for Peace and Progress?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I know that this is only going to open a can of worms.
All right. Second. So the motion's made by Councilor Heiser, seconded by the mayor, uh, um, that we eliminate candidates running for office from being considered, uh, as panelists or moderators in Dialogues for Peace and Progress. Is there discussion on the motion? Follow-up question, what about all the rest of the rules, which are all pretty solid?
No, I, I have a, something to look into that.
All right. Is there discussion on that motion? Councilor Zuniga.
Yeah. So why only the Peace and Progress when there's other, isn't there more than one dialogue event that occurs throughout the year?
They're, they're all named the Peace and Progress event. It's an event series.
It would apply across the table.
I would like to see, couldn't we make a specific event for people who are running for office? Um, just because obviously then it, doing just a chamber event might not be enough. So we create another one. I'll moderate it. And then we can have partisan, nonpartisan up here, give them their chance to speak.
That's not posted on the agenda for discussion. So we're not be able to talk about that now. But there are issues with that and we could talk about that for a while. But, um, we need to stay focused on this, the particular motion on the table. Councilor Parsley.
Okay. I'm gonna have to disagree with this motion. This is an event created by a council member for the residents of Kyle, and we should be taking charge of this. So my recommendation would be that a council member or any, any of us, anybody sitting on this dais as an elected official for the city of Kyle only to be allowed to participate as a moderator or as a panelist. That would be my suggestion. None of us run in a ticket that has any party affiliated to us. So if we were to, you know, divide these events in between all of us and we were to work as a pair for Black History Month, Juneteenth, Hispanic Heritage Month, we all get a turn to be moderators for any, for an event and then allow panelists of, you know, all backgrounds, whatever the, the Peace and Progress is, with the exception that no pan, nobody sitting in here should be running for office in a partisan way. Like county commissioners, state representatives, none of that. But.
All right. We, we have a motion on the table. We've, this, we're going on 30, 45 minutes, uh, at this point. So at the end of the day, we all have different opinions about this. And we're just going to let the, the votes carry. So I'm going to roll call that.
Is that in debate or is this on the motion?
Motion.
Could you repeat the motion, please?
To not allow for any.
The motion is if you are running for an office partisan or nonpartisan in any way, you cannot participate as a moderator or panelist.
In the Peace and Progress.
In the Peace and Progress Events Series.
Aye.
Parsley.
Nay.
Flores Kail.
Nay.
Bradshaw.
We didn't get your vote, Bradshaw. Can you try again?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear my name. Nay.
Aye.
Mitchell.
Aye. All right. All right. Motion carries four to three. Um, I want to, uh, okay.
I have another motion.
Okay. Councilor Parsley.
I would like to make a motion for the moderators for the Peace and Progress panelists, uh, for the moderators of the Peace and Progress Series to be, um, be council members.
Second.
All right. Motion's made by Councilmember Parsley, seconded by Councilmember Flores Kail, that moderators are selected from the dais. That we, we are the moderators for these events. Is there a discussion on that motion? Councilor Heiser.
Okay. Just like we discussed, if we have a candidate who's running for office, who sits up here and does not stump for themselves, but participates within the spirit of the expectation, there, the, what I'm, what I've heard and, and what I'm hearing from you guys is that the sheer appearance of the person as a candidate, their face, their likeness, their name on a Chyron on the television, that is publicity for somebody as a candidate. So in theory, a, a part, a candidate running for office could participate, not identify themselves as a candidate and receive the same notoriety and the same ability to share the clips on YouTube, to, on their social, to do all the things. I could, and like, make a list for you. But, and, and that's not okay. But it is okay for, and you guys cited coming up with questions in advance and you're just being moderators. Like, I agree. You don't have to abuse the power to receive the, the, the benefit of your likeness being on display as a candidate. That was the whole purpose of, I think, of the last conversation. I don't, and, and, and I don't think we should have this rule at all. But if we're going to have it, just like the motion I had, it's got to be one way or the other. We can't just make rules that are in favor of us. That, that, it can't work that way.
I'm sorry. I don't know if. I'm sorry, I don't know if I explained myself correctly. What I was trying to say is a program to be run by council members, period. That way, we can pick, you know, what event each of us is going to do. That's what I was trying to say. Obviously, since the motion passed, if a council member is running for reelection, then the person will not be allowed to be a panelist or a moderator, which means next year, I won't be able to be either or, neither will Councilmember Tobias.
So, I'm sorry, are you saying that?
Hang on, hang on, hang on, so, so-
What I'm asking is, these events to have consistency, to be done by council members or the mayor, meaning that any of us can be a moderator for any of the three events.
So, so to clarify, so technically, that's currently going to be the case. You can be a moderator. So you, you would be very likely the moderator of, and it would be presented, the proposal is for Rachel to present to us.
In a timely manner, and council would vote whoever the moderator was from the dais.
So that's currently going to be the option. So like, coming up in September, I would think the moderators would likely come from this dais if there's that interest, but it wouldn't be, it wouldn't exclude anyone else, but it also doesn't exclude the members of the, the dais. And that also includes participants. So if, if, if there are four folks who are eligible to participate, they can all participate. Two of them is participants, and two of them is, is moderators currently. So to clarify your motion, are you saying that you want moderators to be only from the council and not potentially from outside of the council?
I would assume for consistency purposes and for all of us to have engagement with the community, for, for the moderators or for the event to be held by, by this dais.
Well, I, I can support that for a couple reasons. One is that that's pretty much been the case from the beginning, with Dex and with you and Councilwoman Flores-Kale and others. I don't know that anyone else has ever moderated, actually.
Vanessa Westbrook for the two this year, she has been the moderator.
Okay.
I will say, just as a staff member, I feel like it's a cultural event, and I think it's really important that we include people from the culture we're spalking about. So for Juneteenth and Black History Month, I feel like that might present issues to the community.
To be a moderator?
Yeah, I agree. That would, that would cause a major stir.
Then we are not having any consistency, because then how are we going to pick who's going to be the moderators out of the 60,000 people that may want to be a moderator for an event?
With my proposed policy, it would be, council would select the moderator, and it could be anyone that's on council or a board commissioner committee member that's appointed by council.
Who will make that selection?
I would bring it for council before, probably a month or so before-
You would bring nominations.
I would, we wouldn't do applications probably for the moderator. We would probably have council select that, but I'm open to open applications at that time.
It can't be where you bring it forward and say, "Okay, council, who's going to moderate this year's Juneteenth?", and we have an hour-long conversation, and there's, there's, so it needs to be, frankly, it needs to be you who make a nomination, but-
I could bring maybe forward three nominations, and council will choose between those.
We could just bring you a proposal of, here's something that we think makes sense, given the circumstances, what's happening in the community. We could give you a proposal and then see if the council's comfortable with that. I think what we're just trying to make sure is that the council's aware of the selection and making a conscious choice of a moderator. Otherwise, it's the staff making choices on that, and that's, that's problematic for us.
It is problematic, no matter how you slice it.
Yeah.
It's a little bit of a political grenade, so.
It is a grenade. Right, but, but her point is, is well-taken. So in the, in the Hispanic Heritage one, that one's not, not an issue for council to participate in as moderators, but in the, in the Black History Month, Juneteenth, not Black History Month, but in the Juneteenth event, we're really not qualified. So it's a situation where, that there would, I can, I'm very confident that there would be pushback on that, and that's just about us being sensitive to this situation. Whether you agree that maybe we should moderate the Juneteenth or not, you know.
It's not about the event.
We're going to continue to have problems until these events get canceled.
That's fine. I just, I wanted to have consistency, and it's our engagement with the residents and the panelists. That was, that was where I was coming from. Not about taking anybody's position to do anything.
All right, the motion is still on the table, but I think-
I want to retract my motion.
All right, is that agreeable to the second? I don't remember who seconded. Who, who seconded? Okay, okay. I do think that your policy outside of that is really good. I think we should adopt it so that you have that clear direction moving forward. So I'd like to make a motion to accept the remainder of the policy outside of the context of the, motion by the mayor, seconded by Mayor Protim. Is there discussion?
Mayor, if I could, our intent would be to bring this back as an official document that you'd have as a resolution that you'd adopt.
Okay, but that's fine, but this is giving direction for you to bring it back.
We'll take this direction and bring it back in a resolution next council meeting.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Nope.
All right, I, honestly, the conversation was hard, but I think we did a good job getting through it.
Thank you, council.
All right. All in favor, say aye. Aye? All opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. All right, we still have executive session, so hopefully we still have some energy for it, because there's some good stuff in there. Pursuant to Chapter 551 Texas Government Code, City Council reserves the right to convene into executive sessions from time to time. As deemed necessary during this meeting, the City Council may convene into executive session pursuant to any lawful exception contained in Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, including any or all of the following topics pending or contemplated litigation. Nope, let's skip that one. A possible purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate pursuant to Section 551.072 to deliberate the purchase of real property for public purchase, purchase of property for city facilities and public purposes, personnel matters pursuant to Section 551.074, City Manager Performance Review Discussion convening into executive session pursuant to Section 551.087 Texas Government Code to deliberate regarding the offer of economic incentives to one or more business prospects that the city seeks to have locate, stay, or expand near, enter near the city, Project Chiapet, Lion King, Hot Pursuit, Lakeview. All right, there was no action taken in executive session. I'm going to call this meeting back to order. There will be no action taken now. Motion to adjourn. All right, we're adjourned.